Welcome, everyone. It's the 7th of November, 2022. This is a regular work session of the Billings City Council. For anybody who might be watching, our work sessions are a little more informal than our regular business meetings. But we, and we also, it's important that you know that we don't make decisions that are binding decisions during our work sessions, except to maybe give instruction to staff for further follow-up in the future. So we've got four items on our agenda tonight. If anybody doesn't have a copy of the agenda, there should be a copy back on the cart there. Feel free to help yourself. We'll have an opportunity for public comment after each one of those items, or kind of midway through, after we get a staff presentation. We're also going to have an opportunity for public comment at the very beginning of the meeting. And I'm going to open it up for public comment on all items, including items on the agenda or not on the agenda. I'd encourage you, if you need to leave, to go ahead and use that opportunity to comment on something, even if it doesn't come up until later in the evening, because we don't know exactly when we'll get there. But if you can wait and you hear the presentation, you may benefit from waiting until you have actually heard some sort of a staff presentation. Before I open it up for public comment, Chris, do you have anything in the way of preliminaries before we go to public comment on all items?
I don't, Mayor. With the agenda, we'll just get rolling.
Okay, very good. Then this is the opportunity for public comment on items, whether they're on our agenda or not. Please come forward. We just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and tell us your name and address. And if it is something that's on our agenda tonight, tell us exactly what it is that you're here for.
Hello. My name is Lionel Tapia. I've been a citizen of Billings for now nearly 30 years, and in that time, the city has become a much more pleasant place to live, due in part due to the development of paths and byways and that sort of thing. So I just come today to give support to one of the items. It's on the transportation plan, and that is the 27th Street path along Airport Road that currently is mostly a goat path, but there are people like me who like to walk up and down that place, that pathway. And it's a way to, for people to leave the valley, go up to the rims, and there will one day be, I think, a path that goes from all the way down to Zimmerman Park, and that'd be another way to connect to that. So I just wanted to say that I was pleased to see that it's on the, on the plan, and hopefully you'll give it consideration. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Tapia. Next.
Hi, Jana Jablonsky. What else do I say? Anything else?
Address.
Oh, 2104, Wingate Lane. It's still new. Okay. So on Tuesday, October 4th, my son Benjamin was struck by a car while he was riding his bike to school. The driver was distracted, speeding, and made no attempt to stop or slow down before crossing the uncontrolled intersection where Benjamin was hit. This was approximately one and a, it was about one more street over from the school entrance. So he was thrown 70 feet from his bike when he was hit. The crash was so severe that first people on the scene thought that he was dead. Many other people who heard the crash thought it was a car-on-car accident. Ben was then transported to the emergency room and was in and out of consciousness for about four hours. Seeing my son lying on the road screaming in pain while paramedics were doing everything they could to secure his head and neck was unimaginably horrible. I was experiencing every parent's worst nightmare. Miraculously, my son is still here. Even though he was wearing his helmet, he suffered a severe concussion and a lot of road rash. I'm here today to do what I can to prevent this nightmare from happening to another family, to another parent, son, or daughter, another child who might not be as fortunate as Ben. Every school day, around 300 children travel to Poly Drive Elementary for school. Many of them, like Ben, walk, bike, or scooter to the school, since there are no buses that transport kids to Poly, which that was news to me. While kids are walking, biking, and scootering to the school at three or four miles per hour on our residential side streets, adults are driving their 4,000-pound vehicles on those same streets and too often are speeding and not slowing at those intersections. We have no speed bumps, stop signs, crosswalks, or painted stop lines on any of the four intersections along Lyman Avenue west of Poly. Most of the blocks also don't have sidewalks, and for some reason, the intersection with Lyman Avenue is difficult for drivers to see, because very few vehicles that I've observed even attempt to slow down at those intersections. I'm here to employ you, City Council, to do everything in your power and authority to expedite the traffic evaluation and installation of traffic calming measures along Lyman Avenue west of Poly Drive Elementary. There are simply too many kids traveling in this neighborhood to and from school to ignore this lack of, of safety. We can only do, we can't just trust the good faith that individuals will hopefully slow down, but we're hoping that some of these traffic, traffic calming measures will provide signals for individuals and hold accountability. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We're glad that Ben is doing well.
Good evening, Mayor Cole and council members. My name is Ethan Canning. I live at 2309 Nina Claire. I'm joined by our entire bench of neighborhood supporters. I'm also here to support the Jablonskis and Ben and their families and our other neighbors as well. The three of us co-authored the letter that you guys all received. I want to give special thanks and shout out to Councilmember Piernton, Rupstis, and Shaw for kind of guiding us and coaching us through. This is the first time we've ever submitted something like this, so we're thankful for the advice. There are hundreds of kids that not only travel to schools, but there's, you know, I've got four kids. We live on that same street, and we've been seeing problems for five years of people traveling 40 miles an hour down the street with no sidewalks, no traffic calming measures, no stop signs, and no crosswalks. It was ironic and startling to me to learn that we live on a safe route to school, given everything we've just talked about. Our entire neighborhood funnels onto Lyman, which funnels into Nina Claire into the southwest corner of Poly Drive. We've already been in the news twice, so we're working really hard to get the message out. And everyone funnels down Lyman, which is exactly where Ben was struck. They hit Nina Claire where I live and then come into that school entrance. So we are here today asking that those, you know, the things that we put in the letter be done. We understand that things take slowly. I know you have budget cycles. We get all that, but we're here to ask that anything that can be expedited. We've been really thankful for the communication from Debbie Melling and her team, and Dakota in particular. But obviously, this isn't a problem for us. It's a citywide problem. We've got Lake Elmo kids struggling. There was a pedestrian that was hit and killed a couple days ago on Sixth and Broadwater. I mean, the public safety downtown and citywide right now is something, you know, for, as a lifelong resident of Billings, that I want my kids to stick around. We need to address it quickly and swiftly as much as we can. We are very excited, but also we're going to be politely aggressive to get something done, because we, this, this can't happen again to my kids or any of your kids or anyone in this, in the area. So we're thankful for the support, and we're going to keep calling and begging and pleading until something gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Jacqueline Garcia, Dorothy Lane. In 1993, we were facing a demon. That demon was hate and ignorance. We're coming up on the 30-year anniversary of Not in Our Town. Not in Our Town was made to help those who are being harassed by racists. But we've had a bigger demon here, longer than 30 years, and it's the drug addiction problem. When do we say enough is enough and come together as a community? Have a town hall? Get everyone together and say, report? Unfortunately, the police do their job to the fullest, but our jail system does not hold the criminals in. We all know that. We've been over it a million times. But three weeks ago, when I came here, I was outside having a cigarette, looking out, I don't know what street that is, across from Wells Fargo. A man passed out, hit his head, and urinated himself. He was on some type of substance. Tonight, when I come to talk about enough is enough, I'm sitting in my car, and a drug deal happens right in front of me. The guy opens his hand, shows what it has. She hands him money. She sees, they see that I brought out my phone to take a picture, and so they finish the drug deal in front of the police department. When is enough enough? We've got to do something about this, because it's affecting our community. I understand we're trying to get Rimrock and all the drug rehabilitation places, but when I called Rimrock, they said if you don't have good insurance, it's going to cost you $20,000 to $30,000 to get the help that you need. We have to start somewhere, though. We've got to figure something out, because this is getting ridiculous. The kids just got so high off of their mind off of dabs at West High, sorry, that they had to go home. They had to go to the hospital. It's trickling into our schools. And what do we hear from the commisioners' office? Nothing's going to change with the jail system until the borders are shut down. The Mexico border. We're all the way up here in Montana. We've got to figure something out. Coming together as a community, figuring something out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Dunn, Dorothy Lane. Two weeks ago, we were given a story, and I still have issues dealing with this internally. I want to share it with you. It was either on October 20th or 21st, a 911 phone call was placed that afternoon from a city employee. He told the 911 operator that a man was personally gratifying himself in front of two children in the park. The city employee called and waited for over an hour for police to show up. During this time, the man finished and walked away. This as a parent, as most of us are. Oh, sorry. We haven't been able to speak directly with you or with the city employee yet, because he was out of time, but as a parent, this is very hard to understand. We went out and walked the entire neighborhood in that area and to see if anyone had cameras of the incident. Nobody did, unfortunately. We also measured where these trees were located from the swings where these two children were playing. One was 38 yards from the swings, and the other was 48. This is unacceptable. Children, yet again, are being put in a situation they shouldn't have to. No cop showed up. This was at Avenue D Park in Ward 3. No excuses of short staffing should be used here. Someone behind a desk could have gone out and taken the call. What about a lieutenant, or a sergeant, or a detective, or street crimes that are out and about in the city? Someone could have showed up for these children in this city, yet no one did. We're talking about kids playing in a park. To me, this is disgusting, that no one showed up to make sure this stopped. Waiting for an officer isn't something that's new to us, but this situation is unacceptable for these kids. No one around the park has cameras. These kids are being put in situations, playing in this park on a daily, I'm sure. It's really messed up to me to mentally try to figure out a way to stop this nonsense. Do you have any ideas? Thank you.
Thank you. And Amber, just to clarify, that, that happened, Avenue D and 30th, that park, not up in the Heights, but Avenue D Park? Okay, yeah. All right, thank you. Mr. Dunn.
Mayor of Council, Jennifer Roy. Thank you. Wesley Dunn, Dorothy Lane, OP Clearinghouse@gmail.com. I like to give gratitude and, and thanks where it's needed. Officer Blaine Lane, there was a shooting at Billings Clinic. Good job, officer. I owe you a peanut butter cake. Marshal Code Enforcement, the whole department, good job, great job. They're holding the city together right now. And I reached out to Debbie Melling myself with the Public Works Department to see if she had found out or had any information on this incident that happened at Avenue D. She was not aware of it, but I want to tell her thank you for the very professionalism that she, that she sent back to me and what she's going to try to do with this situation. Tonight, Mayor, I'd just like to talk about men. What happened to men? I grew up in a generation where if my father or my grandfather would have seen something like what happened at Avenue D or, you know, with what's going on next door at my house, they all would have stood up to this person, to this drug deal, to this drug dealers, to this sex offender, whatever. It, it upsets me. It upsets me that, that men now can't stand up to bullies anymore. They're afraid. They're, they're afraid of losing their jobs. They're, they're, they're afraid of being retaliated against by their, their, their citizens, their neighbors. That's what happened. Why is it that, that men are scared to, to confront bullies, you know, such as what happened in the park? I mean, that, that is, that's a sexual predator, he's a bully, period. That's, that's all there is to it. On that incident, there shouldn't have been just one city worker there. I believe if two city workers could have been there, it would have turned out in a different way. But that man did what he could, but I think as a city, he could have done more. You know, we, we, we thrive on integrity here at the city. To me, if somebody sees that, you have to do something. What happened to men? Women, we love them. I love them. They're still being women. They're still being mama bears. But men, they don't stand up anymore for nothing they believe in, and I believe they're scared, Mayor. And why is that? We need to change that mentality here. I mean, the whole country. We need to change that mentality. We shouldn't be afraid of losing our jobs or being retaliated against by government officials for standing up for what we believe in. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. Any other public comment on items on our agenda or not on our agenda before we move on to item one? Any other public comment? Don't see any, and we don't have everybody online, so we'll close the public comment, initial public comment period. Thank you for those who commented. First item up is the public safety update. We've got four different presentations, I think, first by Chief Valdez, and then Code Enforcement, Legal, and the BPD. We'll go in that order. Just ask, council, we'll have questions of staff, but let's hold them until we get the presentation. We won't wait until the very end. Chris, were you recommending that we wait till the very end or just after each individual presentation and then put questions on that presentation? I guess I'd recommend that we, while it's fresh, we at least have an opportunity to ask questions after the presentation, or do you prefer that we wait until we get all presentations?
Well, the approach we were going to take was if there was anything critical at the time, but if we get through, if we allow the presentations to go, each of the four of them, you'll get the whole flavor of things and then can go back to any of them. So we can do it either way, but one of the threats we have is maybe getting caught up on the first one, second one, not thinking about the fact that it is a collective.
Sure. Approximately, how long do we expect each of the presentations to go?
Well, Chief Valdez said, what, you're about an hour and 15 minutes?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
He's, he's not a minute. You've seen the slides. I mean, you've, you've seen the information, so I would think the presentations collectively will be somewhere in the half hour, 40 minutes category, all collective.
Oh, altogether. Okay, okay.
Yeah, altogether. Some are shorter than others.
Okay. So let's do that. Let's try to hold our questions to the end unless there's something that's truly just really simple and confusing before we move on. Okay?
So just trying to tee things up. So thankfully, as you are all aware, the, for several years now, the council has been strongly leading in the area of improving safety in our community. We had a 2020 safety levy that was a repeal and replace, as nobody knew what was going to happen as we just started into the pandemic, but we knew we couldn't go backwards. So the voters were, were gracious to us and supported that levy. Then in 2021, we had a levy that advanced our capacities across all sectors of the criminal justice system, of which the city is in control of, and we're very grateful for that. So tonight, we're here to give an update on that progress. I'll remind folks, though it may seem odd, it was a year ago, almost to the day, that the voters said yes, and it's actually in the tax bill that they just received that increase. So we have not collected a dollar of additional funds from that levy yet, but as people are paying their bill right now, we are seeing that increase. That being said, we did not, as was the direction of the council and our desire as a staff, we were not going to sit around waiting to collect money now. We've been using cash reserve and, and a financial strategy to begin implementing the commitments we made in the public safety levy immediately after the voters said yes. So you'll hear tonight various components of that implementation. There are some areas in which we still have ways to go on the hiring, and then there's other areas where we were able to be off and running almost immediately. So we've got Chief Valdez, fire first, code enforcement after that, prosecution third, and Chief St. John was going to wrap it up, and then we're all available to answer questions that you have. And as you said, Mayor, if there's anything essential to understanding the information in front of you, it's probably a good idea to ask it then, but save the broader questions for afterwards. So Chief, want to kick us off? Just make sure the, is that working for you?
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Cole and council. We've had some good progress since the last report given in July, so tonight's presentation will be a brief recap of a couple of the items, along with progress on some of the new and key programs that we're implementing. So here's a quick recap. The three-pronged approach that you've heard me talk about so often has now turned into four. Priority dispatch, AMR service agreement, mobile response teams, and CREW, or crisis response units, all designed to help with the efficiency of deploying our resources. You've heard me talk about priority dispatch quite a few times since this last year. The idea is to have AMR respond to the basic life support calls or low acuity calls without a response from FD. So where are we? This program was implemented a year ago tomorrow, and what we did was we took a sample of January 1 through September 30 of last year, and we ran 13,943 calls to be exact. We ended up at 18,042. And then we took a same sample this year, using priority dispatch with full implementation. And it's a slight decrease. It's not a whole lot, but what we found is for the last 10 years, we've experienced about a 5.4% increase in annual calls for service. That's year over year. And so using that data without implementing priority dispatch, for '22, we would be looking at roughly 19,100 calls. But by using priority dispatch, we're projecting somewhere between 17,000 and five, excuse me, 17,000 and 17,500 calls for '22. So about an 8% decrease. Numbers aren't exactly where we want them to be. What we found is a lot of the calls that are categorized in certain areas fell into gray areas, and we couldn't just send BLS anymore, because we got caught a couple times sending an inappropriate response, so we had to readjust. We're learning this program as we go, and our target range is about 10 to 12%. And it's also worth noting that the MRTs and the CREW will also help reduce those FD responses, or the engine CREW responses, I should say. So this slide shows an additional breakdown in the decrease in total calls for service due to that priority dispatch. If you take a look at the fires, you can see it's quite a, quite a bit of a drop-off for the same timeframe. And last year, or excuse me, in '21, we had an arson that caused quite a bit of the fires, the 357 calls that you see up there. You'll see a slight uptick in EMS calls, even though total calls for service are coming down, the EMS calls are slowly rising. Not too much, not a big red flag, but we're just kind of keeping an eye on that. And then the last part, the service and other, the significance of that is, is because we're not responding to those BLS calls anymore, what used to take place is we would send out the cavalry for every single call, and when we got there, we realized it was a low acuity call and then we would be canceled. We're no longer going on those canceled calls anymore. So that's why you see that dramatic decrease there. With recommendation number 18, CPSM wanted to see a service agreement between FD and AMR. This was part two of our process, and this slide addresses some operational gaps within our current ordinance, which is pretty broad-based. It's important to remember that this does not take place of a contract, but does allow the city to specify terms and conditions for an enhanced level of service not addressed in the ordinance. This agreement was signed and executed on October 17th, and it is retroactive. It runs from September 1 of this year through July 1 of 2024 and can be annually renewed after that, should both parties agree. What's important with this agreement is it gives us the right of first refusal, which you've heard me talk about. CAD to CAD goes live next week, automatic vehicle locators. And then also, what's new in this agreement is we are charging AMR now an administrative fee, and they basically pay a quarter of our assistant chief's wages with that. And then we also charge now every time one of our paramedics goes on their rigs. These were some of the positions that were brought on by the public safety mill levy, the AC of EMS, all compliance issues dealing with AMR and EMS, point of contact for behavioral health in the CREW unit, the lead on the MRT program, and priority dispatch review for quality assurance. The assistant training chief, which is also the logistics officer, officially started September 13th, or excuse me, September 19th, procurement and maintenance of equipment are some of the duties, and this position is responsible for managing the deployment and tracking of supplies, equipment, and service support to support large-scale emergencies and daily operations. Deputy Fire Marshal, again, focuses on target hazards within the community and community risk reduction, which satisfies recommendations 14 and 17. And there is CREW, crisis response units. The behavioral health bid process was voted on, approved by council and awarded on the 24th of last month. We'll start working with the partners in the near future to discuss logistics and operations, and that vehicle has been ordered. Mobile response teams. Last progress report was given July 5th. We actually started the interview processes the next day, July 6th and 7th. We did hire six of the 10, and we had to, the reason why we did that is because we needed to ease them in for logistical reasons, to not overtax our training division. Training started August 22nd. Graduation will be November 22nd of this year. They'll be released to shift on November 28th, and those vehicles are on order as well. And the first car will be implemented December 1st of this year, and then the second car will be implemented sometime in the first half of the next calendar year. CPSM progress, 34 recommendations, 26 implemented or in progress. 19 of those are fully implemented, with seven of those in progress. And then we had six collective bargaining agreement issues. One of those, we're actually able to get into the contract and open that up. We should have something inked actually this Wednesday, and it is in regards to our firefighters' annual physicals. And then one item was legislative. That dealt with requiring new residences to have fire sprinkler systems placed in their homes. So that was turned down by legislation last session. And then the last one that we found out, which is a wildland urban interface, that is under the purview of the building department, which we'll be working with on that shortly. That is the end of the report. Any burning questions or?
Anything critical at this point? Councilor Vetricki?
What is CAD to CAD?
What is CAD to CAD? So that allows interface for American Medical Response. So the system that we have in place now, our dispatcher receives the information, they type in the narrative, it goes to Spokane, which is where AMR is dispatched from. Then there's that delay, then they send their narrative to their ambulance. Well, now there's a, there's an interface. Well, now there's an interface. They receive the information the same time our firefighters receive the information, which will speed up.
What does CAD stand for? I know that's a stupid question.
Computer aided, oh, go on, it, who is? Thank you, dispatch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pretty sure it wasn't computer aided design.
No.
Okay. Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you've kind of touched on this because I think, but I'd like to hear more about this, if you can. On the calls for services were down, but you kind of mentioned about how it frees up your team to get out there and respond faster. Can you, I mean, what's really, what, when rubber hits the road is the people are looking for fast response. And so, and that was, that was a lot during the public safety. We talked about, hey, our response time is long, and this is going to help with that. So I didn't see in the presentation where this is what your, what our response time has done for the public. How has that been reduced now by this?
So it's a delicate balance that we're trying to do. Unfortunately, because we went to priority dispatch, we've tweaked in some areas, such as the CAD-to-CAD. AVL will help with that. But we've also slightly increased because now we interrogate the caller more to deploy the proper resources. So it's a fine, delicate dance that we're trying to do. We haven't really delved into response times just yet. I can tell you, I know that they are down, but I don't know that just yet.
Okay. I look forward to hearing the information on that when it comes.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our code enforcement section is up next. Tina?
So you have seen many of these slides before. I basically took the first presentation and kind of tweaked it for you. Tonight, I'm going to touch on three areas to update you. One is going to be our abatements and our updated abatement process. Another will be staffing and budget. And the last part, I've been asked to speak about the nuisance property team since Kevin is not here tonight. So we'll just go ahead and get started. So these are the five enforcement areas that as soon as I get my last residential spot filled, we will be going to those beginning of next year. So we will be able to equally distribute the workload amongst my residential officers. You've seen this before. It basically just gives you an outline of what each of their disciplines are. Residential officers in those five areas handle things of that nature on that slide. Our code officer, too, that's our commercial officer, is one of the safety levy positions that were granted. And we now filled our nuisance property officer as well, so that's been helpful. So we have filled all three of the public safety mill levy positions that were approved. I have everyone in place, like I said, except for that remaining residential, and those interviews are Wednesday, so hopefully I will have someone in place very shortly. Andy provided some numbers for me as far as our expenditures, so I'll go over that now. We did need to buy two trucks for the officers. We also purchased the vehicle from planning, so we were able to get that one fairly reasonably. And we've had to buy equipment and some software, phones, et cetera, to get those officers up to speed. So I have all the equipment that I need for the officers, including this third one. So our abatement processes, we've done a lot of work in this area. First, I'd like to talk to how we've been able to work with municipal court, as well as city legal. They have been instrumental in shortening the time between the initiation of the case until we could actually get an abatement in court. And that timeframe has been reduced significantly. I think within 60 days, we're getting that abatement. So that's helping us to clean up more properties around the city. It's helping us to keep on top of some of these cases, get them cleared, and get our complaints resolved. We also recently updated some of our forms with the help of legal, so that our abatement orders read better. Moving forward, as soon as I get the final okay from legal, we will have a one-year term in that abatement order, that if they reoffend within that year, we can go back in and evade it. We don't have to go through the notices and the court process. We can just go right back in and clean it up. We're using more city departments to clean up these abatements, which is a significant cost reduction than hiring out some of these things. We have more control over how the abatements are conducted. We recycle quite a bit now. I believe one of our properties, we recycled over $1,600 worth of metal. And what that does is it offsets the costs of that abatement for that property owner, as well as for the city. And we're using a more methodical approach now. So once we get that abatement order, we go in and we do a walkthrough, and we decide what city departments we need, what equipment we need, if we need to recycle, those sorts of things. And we methodically and strategically go about these abatements. So it's not a huge rush, and we can do it systematically. So our abatements since January, we're averaging about one a month. And Mayor, we are tracking those employee hours now for you, but just on abatements, not from the inception of the case through the ends, but just on abatements at this point. We've had a great deal of success on all of these. The last one, of course, was Dorothy Lane. We just did that on November 2, I believe. We had another one scheduled at 13 Monroe for the third. That self-corrected, so the owner took care of that for us. And we have a couple more scheduled, weather permitting. So we've been very successful as far as our abatements have been concerned. And that's the end of it. So I guess you wanted me to speak as far as the nuisance properties team, right?
Thank you, Tina. That'd be great. And since Kevin isn't here, we can feel free to call it the strike force.
If I do that, then I have to, like, do the secret, you know, handshake and everything, and I can't do that.
As long as, as long as Councilmember Owen gets to know what it is, she'll be okay.
Okay.
She already knows. Okay.
So we've had about four or five meetings so far. And I got to say that I'm very pleased with the way it's progressing, because I think it's a good, it's a good team. Initially, we started with police department, code enforcement, legal, and we kind of set a game plan. And then we started inviting other agencies around the city, and actually, from outside of city, like probation and parole and the health department, to be included in those discussions. And I think we've been very successful in being able to be in the same room, talk about the problems, talk about what we can and cannot bring to the table as far as our different disciplines, and made some progress as far as a direction. We also have managed to keep communication together, which sometimes is hard when you're dealing with a lot of different entities. So we've figured out a way to, all of us be able to input information in a consistent manner, so that it's consistently updated. And Bobby Johnson from the police department, the crime analyst, she was instrumental in creating that. We lift these properties on police briefings, so that we can have area checks done. And basically, as these properties start to crop up, whether it's from the police department or the health department, or from us, from code enforcement, we basically collectively as a group come up with a game plan as far as how we can figure out how to resolve these problems. And I think it's been very beneficial, and having Kevin lead that team has been ideal.
Thank you for your great work and your team's work on that. We'll move on to the next one. Let's do something. Councilmember Boyet. Tina?
Tina, question for Tina? Just one question. Mostly, in the past, the officers responded to a call because of a complaint. Are you still in that phase, or are you able to move yet to being proactive, instead of having a call come in, an officer, you know, is out seeing something?
We do a mixture. So we are complaint-driven still, but when we're in an area and we are there on a complaint and we see similar or other complaints that we need to address, the officers are addressing those as well, and they are initiating those cases. You're welcome.
Okay. Councilmember Purington?
So with making progress with the nuisance strike team, or whatever we're calling it, have you had some results? I mean, have you had, have you had definitive results where you've actually shut down, whether it's businesses, or caused prosecution to come about of certain individuals?
Not yet.
Have you progressed that far?
Not to that extent, but what I can tell you is that we're learning a lot about how we can help each other. For example, probation and parole showed up at our last meeting, they were invited, and they were actually able to help us with some of the code enforcement issues that we have, and helping us with what they can bring to the table as far as, we can't walk onto a property, but they can. So that partnership and understanding what they can do and what we can do, it's setting that foundation. So I fully believe that what you're asking for, we, you will see very soon.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, because you mentioned this, that the abatement process is reduced down to about 60 days. That sounds great, but what was it, what was, how long was it taken before?
A lot longer. When I took over some of them, they, the problem was, is that officers were going to court just to do status checks or status hearings with the judge, which is completely not essential. What they can do now is, after we met with legal and with court, is they can move that quicker. So the officer will send out their notices, they can do a citation for a fine if they want, if they're still not getting compliance. But once we go to court, it's because we're seeking an abatement. It's not, well, Judge, they cleaned up a little bit, so let's give them another 30 days. We're not doing that anymore.
So what could have taken years has now taken 60 days.
Some of those cases went on for years. And the open storage ones, that are a little bit easier to do, maybe not years, but it all kind of, it all needed to be streamlined.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, I'm just looking for ways that show the public how really, how we've changed our processes, and have improved, and really are helping the city. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to legal. And just a reminder, you're not waiving your right to ask questions. You'll have an opportunity later. Councilmember, or Councilmember, City Attorney Gina Dahl.
Yep. Thanks, Auntie. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be giving you a progress, or maybe a lack of progress report in my case. Recap a little bit here. The overall plan of the legal department for the public safety mill levy funding, mill levy funding was to, is to hire seven positions, three of those prosecutors, and four support staff to include administrative, you know, paralegal victim witness. We were going to wait to determine, once we got the prosecutors in there, to see where the four support staff would, could best be used, and with a portion of the staffing to be dedicated to code enforcement. The, as part of the plan to implement, the first step to implement the seven positions was to hire three positions this fiscal year, so that's what we budgeted for, and that's what we planned for. Unfortunately, we've only been able to hire one position, that was a victim witness specialist. We've simply had insufficient office space. We just don't have anywhere to put people. We've done the best we could. People are office sharing, and there's remote work happening. We considered renting office space, which just isn't workable due to the constant collaboration the teams have with each other, and the need to be close to the court, as well as training. A train would be a huge training issue if we had a couple people in different space and a different building. So we've only, we planned this three, to hire the three, because at the, during the budgeting process, we had a plan. We had some space that we were going to use. We were working with another department who was going to share some office space with us, but that fell through. So we simply just haven't been able to get those other two positions hired for this fiscal year.
And Gina, just on that slide, the fourth line down, there's a typo, says two under FY23 proposed. I guess that should be an eight. Under criminal deputy attorney.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I think I used an old slide instead of using the fixed updated slide. I think you might have brought that to my attention before.
Sure. Go ahead.
Apologize for that. We do have a person retiring at the end of the year, one of our legal secretaries. So my plan is to use that space to hire one of the new prosecutors. So that's just a bit of a trade-off. It's sort of like stealing from Peter to pay Pauls, because that will, we won't be able to replace the administrative, that legal support staff. So those duties will, we'll have to adjust there. So it's kind of a trade-off, but that's our plan at this point. You've seen this slide before, just to give you an idea, kind of a reminder as to where we were. Back in 2019, you can see, that's the second section there, that are high numbers, and we, council authorized a fifth prosecutor in 2020, so that, that brought our non-DV cases down quite a bit. That's that pink bar. With five prosecutors, their caseload went down a bit. And the dark bar there, you can see that's the domestic violence cases, was still up high. So when council approved a sixth prosecutor for, that would be the second DV unit prosecutor, that was the partially grant funded position, that helped that caseload tremendously and brought that down to almost half, or I guess half, by 51. The, this next slide is a variation of one that you've seen before, and it's just showing, obviously, it's showing the domestic violence cases that have been referred to our office, and that what we've been able to actually file. So that's showing you over the trend over several years. In the year and a half that we've had authorization for two domestic violence prosecutors, one of those prosecutors has been on his own for about six months, just because of turnover and the gaps in hiring. When the second DV prosecutor was authorized for 2021, he worked basically solely on the backlog of cases for about four to five months. So you can see that in 2021's numbers, that where that percentage of referred cases filed jumps up to 71%. Realistically, an achievable target's more around 60 to 70%, as you can see, in 2022. That, that has gone back down to more realistic numbers. We're a little bit below what the target is, but as you can see, that's still going to be the second highest in the seven years that are showing there. So until we can fully implement our plan for the public safety mill levy funding, the legal department continues to work on strategies to streamline the charging decisions and some efficiencies within our office. We are working with the police department to try to get a process in place to have officers charge certain cases directly, that instead of waiting for a prosecutor review, we're also working on some practices within our office to make some drafting procedures a little bit more streamlined. So hopefully, that will be an efficiency we can implement in the near future. And as Tina mentioned, we are also participating in the nuisance property team, or the task force, whatever it's being called. We have a dedicated staff member assigned to that, that task force. So that's been really beneficial, as you've heard from her. So with that, that is all I have.
Very good. Any questions for Gina? Don't seat him. Chief St. John?
Mayor, Council, good evening. Very quickly, we'll run through this. What I have for you is third quarter statistics, and then the overarching safety levy implementation, a lot of the FAQs that us on this side of the podium get, and you get a few of them as well. So I will, I will touch on that very briefly. Our FY23 budget included the addition, which we haven't collected yet, about 2.4 million for the police department. And with that is the installment of the officers, the CSOs, the ID techs, as indicated. And so what we have been doing... so what we have been doing, if you recall, that Chris had given me permission to hire until he said stop. I got him to do that once, but following that, we just transitioned from that philosophy to implementing the obligations of the safety levy. So we have been hiring nonstop, trying to get to our authorized strength of 167 sworn positions. As it stands right now, we are at 159 sworn officers. I have three pending retirements, and then we're going to get one back in December. I might say two and a half pending retirements, because one sworn officer is resigning and then taking a CSO position. So I'm not losing the person entirely. What that relates to is 93% of our authorized strength is what we have right now, 93%. When I break that down further, because of some injuries, some sicknesses, some FMLA stuff, that drops us to a total of 13 down. That leaves us with 87% of our sworn strength that is deployable. And the division that really takes the hit, because that's where our new officers come to, would be our uniform division and patrol. And they are right now down 15%, are operating at 85% of their operational strength. So you can see that while we continue to hire and put people on, it only takes two weeks to say, thank you, and I'm out of here, and it takes a little while to get people on. We are right now struggling with the academy. We are looking to send five to MLEA in January, and they are full. So we need to, you know, make room or find ways to get around that. We graduate four in December, and we hired somebody from the Chicago PD, so there'll be five new ones on the road in December. So again, it's a constant process. But the thing I want to stress is that, you know, even at 85%, the officers are doing a great job. I mean, they're answering the bell day in and day out with some very, very serious, complicated cases. They're demonstrating their flexibility, their professionalism across the board, their teamwork, and they're getting it done. Yeah, we're paying some money in minimum staffing, and some other things. On our civilian side, our community service officers, it was a strategic decision to postpone that till we got a little further in the, in the budget year, but we have hired four of seven, and they will start December, January. Our identification, we have three of five hired, and then our clerical is up to staff. So we're doing pretty well there, but that, that job is continuing. To remind you what our strategic objectives are, in support, and as obligated by the safety levy, we want to get a reduction in violent crime, improve downtown safety, improve traffic, and then support mental health, which really kind of fell into admin's side, so just being supportive in that particular situation. Just to point out a few highlights, our division activity that supports the safety levy and our strategic objectives, the patrol division, this is third quarter, 24,000 calls for service. It pales in comparisons, the chief Valdez is 6,000 calls. I don't know how he does it. I just don't know. We are standing at about 78,000 calls for service right now. And we generally end up in the mid 90s. We haven't got to that 100,000 mark. But we have been able to increase our presence. We respond to neighborhood issues with additional traffic enforcement, DUI. We've increased our presence and visibility. Got the same thing. Our presence up on the rims, due to some complaints, some problematic behavior up there. As Tina indicated, we are partners with them on problematic property. And then we, we had a bike patrol all summer long in the downtown area, and I don't think, I didn't hear a lot of complaints about downtown stuff, and I'm not sure if you did either. So that increased presence and focus there paid dividends. Our investigation division for the third quarter, 388 cases. There's 17 of them, by the way. So that's a pretty good caseload. The thing that's impressive, 61% clearance rate, arrests 38%, and all of our homicides are solved. So either by arrest, or to the county attorney for warrant, and things of that sort. They had a significant number of callouts. The big thing anymore is the electronics that we're dealing with. There's people who I don't understand a word they're saying, they're so technical, but they're into your cellphones and your computers. You can see in third quarter, 144 downloads alone. And that's just critical evidence that we're dealing with. And we added domestic violence investigator, and co-located them down at the CPC for now, along with a state agent we'll talk about later. Our street crimes unit, very, very active, high profile. You can see the cases they initiated with the arrests, how many warrants they drew up and served. They're the ones that really are tracking down your stolen vehicles. So 69 and a quarter, that's a lot. And what we're finding these days is these guys are just driving them to the next crime scene and dumping them off. Generally not seeing them chopped up for profit or whatnot. The firearms are very significant to get those off the street, and that fentanyl. You know, you've heard me say it before, the DEA tagline is one pill can kill. Well, if you look at that, there's 4,000 lives that they just saved. So good work on their part. Rolling into our drug unit, CCSIU, you can see what their focus is, and what their accomplishments are for the third quarter. Significant, you know, numbers of pills and poundages, the warrant. They work mostly in the federal system, so this is where you see people getting indicted and sentenced out of the federal court. 99% of the time, it's going to be our drug unit, which is a multi-state federal task force, which we oversee. And then felony arrests and indictments. Good stuff there. Traffic unit, I think you're all aware of that. That's when your constituents are calling about people speeding in the neighborhood, which is generally their neighbors. We will send people out there to enforce that. We've had speed trailers up upon request at different locations, and you can see just what a unit of five officers have done. So the warnings and the citations, and I've got a stack, probably about 500 more warnings that haven't been entered. They're not critical to any process in the justice system, but that number, not all of them belong to the, to them, but that's another eight, you know, that's 800 warning. So we are really making an effort to educate the public with stuff. We just can't, don't have the time to get them in. Our evidence building and ID, you can see they're processing video requests, a lot of that. There's some body camera stuff, some in-car camera stuff, things coming from maybe some security video, the fingerprint entries, lineups, latent exams, all the stuff you see there. I think the thing, the bottom two bullets, they took in 5,100 items, and they got rid of 3,200. So again, you got us a really beautiful facility, but we got to continue to work to get rid of stuff. Tenant Hart's sitting in the back there, done a great job coming up with processes to get stuff out of there, whether it's returned, destroyed, whatever the case may be. So well done on his part. And what that all reflects in our statistics for third quarter, you can see that our calls for service are up just a little bit, 4.4 compared to last year. As I said, we stand at 78,000 for the year. Cases are something that when officers have to take some sort of enforcement action, there's not as many of those as there are for just police showing up and doing what police do. So we're a little bit down there, but pretty close to where we were before. Our violent crime, and remember, our crime index, essentially what we're looking at, homicide, robbery, aggravated assault, and sex crimes, for the most part. You can see we have a 2.5% increase in third quarter. And going back to 2020, you can see that we dropped significantly. But we still have some work to do there. On the property crime side, property crime side, burglary, theft, stolen vehicle primarily. They do throw arson in there. We don't get a bunch of those, other garbage cans and cars, but you can see we are up just a little bit. Arrests are pretty, pretty well consistent with last year, and our sites and warnings, which is indicative of an increased traffic enforcement third quarter, again, increased, or increased over the third quarter last year, so in good shape there. What I like to do now is highlight the partnerships that we're in. It's been so effective. As I indicated, we have a domestic violence team. The state sent us an agent. It is grant funded for three years. And we got a retired sergeant from Aurora, Colorado. Seems to be getting along well down there, doing, helping, helping out with that. We have re-energized, or actually, they contacted us, HRDC, to have it HUD officer again. That is entirely different than, than regular, you know, civilian, being a landlord tenant. They have different rules, different things that, that we can do, more leverage. We used to have HUD officers. They would like that back. We are putting somebody at the ATF, so we have a nexus with firearms and get stuff in the federal system. You should see a press conference or press release on a conference on Thursday on this identity theft with the U.S. Attorney's Office. We've had some really good cases with a cross-deputized officer that can get stuff in the federal system. That's where you want it. Working with our businesses on the trespassing issues, SEPTED, of course, is going, and then you got Tina's report, but what a great, what a great relationship. You know, she's taking what she learned at the police department and applying that over there. We're getting some stuff done across the board, so good stuff there. Council members, throughout some of our meetings, you guys have had questions on myriad of topics. Mayor, for you, you were, where's all my stuff at here? You're asking about effects of marijuana. Anecdotally, I can tell you that we've had several serious and fatal accidents where marijuana has been on board. The state reports more DUI testing positive, 17% increase in DUI submissions for analysis. We are seeing an increase in black market, where we have, if you go back to your CCSIU report, you'll see 29 intercepts, that's postal stuff, going to private residents, because they can make money. And so we've had, we're seeing the initiation of that. There was a fire at a dispensary, and most recently, we had three students overdose at West High with dabs, which is a highly concentrated THC product. So I can't tell you exactly what the social effect is, but I can tell you that it is affecting our community, unfortunately, as advertised. Councilmember Repsus, on, you wanted some more information, and here's the report that, that I give to Chris. Generally, you can see these are our three Ws and one Rs. So again, 1,400 to year to date, we haven't been able to do anything specific. That's doubled up. Specific to your request, councilmember, what are these things for? And you can see in third quarter, we got 24, almost 2,500 warrants that are active, 1,400 misdemeanor traffic, and then felony. And then, the thing that I want to point out is that we arrested, we arrested, you know, 2,900 on warrants. So you get, don't confuse the people getting arrested on warrants with the ability to put people in jail. We are not stopping doing what we do. We will arrest people. And then on the back end, where we, where we do the three W, one Rs, is whether we can get them in jail or do something else. So enforcement, and I've told them, keep doing what you're doing, and this reflects some of the numbers that you have. Councilmember Owen, on you on the juvenile stuff, could not really pin anything down as to the people that were turned away. I can tell you that if somebody, the juvenile commits an egregious crime, a serious felony, they're going in. We haven't had an issue with that, any way, shape, or form. And this is just general. Anytime we make an arrest, we cite them into youth court, and then, you know, whether they show up or not gets the warrant. So they get referred back. And the youth court, or I should say juvenile probation's the only one that can put someone in. But we just haven't had that many complaints with that. And Councilmember Chiriki, short of names up here, what you're seeing is the number of warrants per individual. So warrants on the left, individual on the right. Our winner is a gentleman with 40-plus warrants. And you can see all the way down, we have at least one, or one person in the community, or at least in our system. You know, there's 2,000 of those that have one warrant. So that's the work that we generate. Mayor?
Thank you, Chief. Much appreciated. Council, that's the end of our four presentations, so why don't we dig in with questions for the chief, and we can kind of work our way back. If you want to put them to a particular staff person, just tell us who. Chief, if you want to stay up here for just a second, I'll get us started. This is not, 30,000 feet is really right down at ground level. You heard the comments earlier about this event at Avenue D Park, and I don't know if you knew anything about that, but I don't want to just ignore it. So if you want to, if you do have any information, you want to comment on that, I just want to make sure you've got the opportunity to tell us what you know or don't know.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor and Council. What was related to you is not accurate. We did receive a call. We did have officers go. We did identify a transient individual up around the water tank. It was the officer's determination that nothing obscene or whatnot had taken place, and they got the person up, got his stuff together, and sent him on their way. The employee, the public works employee is the one that called the police, and then it, you know, we, that was on the 10th of October, and the information went to Debbie. Debbie asked me about it, and I reported, I reported in kind. So that was not quite accurate. I will have to take a look at the time, how long it took officers to get there. But I can tell you that, you know, again, running 85%, that's probably not a, you know, a high priority call assigned by dispatch at that point.
Okay, but we don't know how long it took to respond.
No, but I, actually, that report's sitting on Mr. Iflin's desk right now, so we can certainly pull that out very quickly.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to give you that opportunity. Other questions? Councilmember Boyer, Councilmember Piericson?
Thank you, Mayor. After going through all this for the quarter, is there anything that, any patterns or trends that either make you happy or make you sad, that's, that's happening as a trend?
Well, councilmember, I think the inability to get things stopped on the front end is very frustrating. And we get, you know, again, the questions that you hear and that I hear all the time is, you know, where are you? What are you doing? What are you, what are you doing about this? On the back end, our officers do a great job. They do a wonderful job investigating. They clear cases, they make arrests, they provide closure for victims. But we cannot, cannot get a handle on the violent crime by ourselves. It's not a police issue entirely. So we really need to, you know, work with our community partners to try to identify, and we know methamphetamine is still out there, fentanyl's killing people. So we're, you know, we're still trying to deal with those issues there. The firearms are just, they're rampant. They are showing up even at our, you know, juveniles disturbances. And it's unfortunate, because they, you know, they are using firearms now to settle anger and disagreement issues. And back in the day, it used to be, well, let's just meet out in the alley. And now it's, now it's a firearm. But there, everything we're seeing, I mean, we had a homicide two nights ago down the south side. We had, you know, shooting out at Manny's in the parking lot. Guns are everywhere, and not necessarily hitting a lot of people, but they're being fired, you know, they're hitting stuff. And so that, you know, that's very disappointing, that no matter, just seems like, again, we know that the criminal element doesn't like a vacuum. We take somebody out, and somebody else comes in. But the work that's being done is really, really good, but it just seems we cannot ebb the flow of what we have going on the front end. And those are the things that hit the headlines. You know, I had an offline conversation with, with Councilmember Owen, our domestic violence. councilmember Owen, our domestic violence, and family violence specifically, is off the charts. It is off the charts, but it's not a headline grabber. So how do we get a handle on that on the front end, because it affects your aggravated assault and your, and your misdemeanor assault numbers? That answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
You want more?
Yeah, it's just getting worse. Councilmember Perrington?
I have about four questions, and some of them are really quick. What's a call-out?
A call-out is, so anytime our patrol division is basically overwhelmed by situations, so homicide is going to generate the on-scene commander calling the detective commander and say, come out and investigate this, and so the detectives get mobilized, they bring the crime scene van out, and they stay there for the duration, freeing up the patrol officers, most of them to go out and answer the calls for service, so that's a call-out.
And you had forty of those?
Forty of them in the quarter, yeah.
Okay, so, what is the efficacy of speed trailers?
I'm sorry?
The efficacy of speed trailers? Because all those do are flash, right, and say you're going forty-five in a thirty-five mile an hour zone, is that right? Is that what a speed trailer is?
Yeah, that's what it does, you know, you can, you can get people to slow down a couple times, because sometimes the red and blue lights flash on them.
Right.
And they hit the brakes and whatnot, and so you get, you know, you see people slowing down, but after a while, they know, you know, that they're not going to be, be chased. So two things, is that, you know, number one, it gets us some data, if needed, in areas, if we need to be looking at speed stuff to, to work with Debbie's crew on that, and second of all, it is legal for us to write citations based off of a speed trailer reading, so...
So, explain how that works, so you're saying that it actually records the number of times someone drives over the speed limit?
It'll give you a graph, and it'll just say, in a twenty-four-hour period, the average speed is X, the highest speed was this, lowest speed was that, and so we can, we can, we can get some of that information.
How do you write a ticket off of that?
Pardon me?
How do you write a ticket off of the graph?
Not off of the graph, it's off of when, when it flashes forty-five, if I'm sitting there, it's just like my radar gun.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
So we, we can do that, and so again, don't want to give away all our trade secrets, but I can have somebody sitting at one end and somebody at the other and go, you know, get that car right there.
Ours goes off quite often, I think, whenever I go into our subdivision, anyway. How do you use personal Ring camera video? How does a police department, do you really use those? When people say, I've got this on my phone, or, you know, we see it on next door, how do you use those?
Well, if it's of evidentiary value, we will collect that, we will archive it, and it will be placed in the case file as evidence to, you know, build whatever, or, you know, we, we have shared with the public on occasion, when we're looking for something.
Right.
Or someone, and so, you know, again, if people are willing to share, share their videos, whether they have something, we're more than willing to, to look at it and use it, there's nothing that precludes that at all, and it's a valuable tool.
Okay, and last question. So, I don't know who does this, and we brought up the marijuana, and this got me thinking with this thing that happened at West. Is there any way that you track underage purchases at these marijuana shops, like they did in bars, you know, they would have the underage thing that bar owners, if you, if you sell to underage ki, or kids, I guess, that are underage, then they get in a world of hurt with, I think, I guess with their liquor license and whatever. Do we have that sort of thing going on with these marijuana shops yet?
We do not.
So we can't be tracking who's selling to underage?
At this point, we, we don't, and understand that most of them in the county.
I understand that, yeah.
And so you're referring to our alcohol enforcement team, which is exactly what they do.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's anything that says we, we can't do that, we haven't done that, it's, it's run by one sergeant and volunteers.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So...
Okay, Councilmember Repsus, Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I wonder if I could just get a little tutoring on this three W and one R, so, three W is, officers have a person, they've got warrants, but they can't serve them the warrants, I don't understand what that means, but then, the other one, the one R, is when they've actually arrested somebody, but, and they take them to jail, but they can't, they can't drop them off, right, that's the problem with the jail, so...
Correct.
Help me understand, what, what does it mean, you can't serve a warrant when you've got the person?
We can serve the warrant, they don't, for various reasons. No room at the jail, they're not going to extradite if it's an out-of-town, out-of-state warrant, it's a small amount, which was your original question, what, what was the amount of things, so, a wide, a wide variety of reasons, it's not that they, it's not that they, that they can't, it's that they don't because of whatever reasons. The one R is they've actually arrested the person, take, taken them down to the detention facility, and been told, no room at the end, and so then we give them a notice to appear, and send the, send them on their, on their way.
So that, that second, the one R, is the jail capacity problem?
That is correct.
The three W, the big number, fourteen-hundred in quarter three, are those judgment calls by the officers, or how do?
Yeah, they are, councilmember, and remember, we just broke out the, the one Rs in October, so, so we could specify, so the fourteen-hundred includes one Rs and three Ws up until October, but yes, it's a discretion call, based on some of those things that I, that I said. We could very, we could very easily arrest all those fourteen-hundred people and take them down to jail, some will go in and some won't. Not all of them are jailable offenses, so they get notices to appear. The thing that we run into, and I would go to one individual with forty warrants, is that that guy doesn't show up, and so if I arrest him again, I give him a notice to appear, I've touched it, Gina's staff touches it, the judge touches it, they don't show up again, now we have another warrant that has to go in, and now there's forty-one. And so there is, so the, the no room at the jail adversely affects our ability to do that. The one Rs, we flat got turned, turned away.
Good, thank you. And Chief, just to clarify that number, fifty-seven in October, and if one assumes that, even if that was a little bit high, and call it fifty on average per month, times twelve would be about six hundred times every year, or roughly twice a day, Billings Police Department takes somebody who they think really needs to be in jail, because they've already decided not to take a lot of people, most people they decide not to take on that little drive, these people are worse, they think there's a good reason, and roughly twice a day, they're told to go to the Doubletree or someplace else, but don't look at the detention facility for a bed. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. They are told to take care of their issue, to show up in court, to contact their probation officer, to, you know, get ahold of their attorney, they're admonished to get it taken care of, and, and we don't. So, you know, certainly, it's frustrating for our officers with that, and it's a whole nother work session to talk about that, but Chris wanted me to report these numbers to you, because again, frustrating for us, I can tell you unequivocally, that these people reoffend. They reoffend, and they continue to, you know, commit crimes, and so frustrating for officers, frustrating for the citizenry, when, you know, when you see something like that happen, and it goes to the capacity issue, not only at the jail, but the entire justice system.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions, but I want to take into some of the questions on this, because I, I think I heard you say some things, I want to double check, so I understand the, the one R designation is officers tried and the county refused them, that's a county commissioner and/or sheriff issue that we have to try and deal with. On the, on the three Ws, that's officer discretion, part of that is probably to them thinking, well, there's no room in the jails, so why bother? My question, I guess my point is, I think we should bother, I think we should take them down there, I think we should, if the officer, if this is a criminal offense, that, that they should be in jail for, that they should be taken down there, and, and, and so the citizens can see that you are doing your job, you are taking them to the county jail, and the county jail is refusing them. So I, I am concerned about, because when, when you said the three Ws, there are some of those in there are not jailable offenses, and so I'd like to know, of the, of that, what, fourteen-hundred, or two-hundred-and-thirteen, how many of those are jailable offenses, and how many of those are not jailable offenses? Because if they're not jailable offenses, then I, then I can understand the officers has that discretion to, well, they're, they're not going to, they're not jailable anyways, so why take them down? Is, is all of those non-jailable offenses then?
Well, it's a matter of what, what the judge says, I mean, if the judge issues a warrant, whether it's a non-appearance bench or an arrest warrant, they expect them to be served, okay, that warrant is served, and not all of them go to jail, I mean, if I have a misdemeanor theft, didn't show up for trial, that one's not necessarily going, going to jail. The, the solution, or the, the technique that you're suggesting right now, would absolutely destroy the record system, because you're having, everyone that we run into, fourteen-hundred people, just, it would be, it would be labor-intensive, it would be a complete, complete waste of time and resources, for, for no reason on that. It's, I just, it's hard to explain right now, but how labor-intensive it is, if we arrest every single person, even though we can't take them to jail, and we know we can't take them to jail, arrest report, touch it by clerical staff, Gina's office has to touch it, the judge has to touch it, and then they don't show up, and we have to do it, do it over and over and over again. The paper is, is absolutely overwhelming with that.
So these are the jailable offenses that the officer's discretion sees that the paperwork is too much for the city to do, so they allow them to walk? And not the, not the non-jail, I'm not talking about the non-jailable, and that's, I think that's what I'd like to see in here, how, we know, when we see this number, I don't see how many are really jailable offenses, because I think we should be doing the paperwork, because, you know, again, these, these are rumors I hear about people who come to Billings because they know they're not going to go to jail when they commit a crime. And so I, I want to make sure that we have the right information, and we're not, you know, we don't want to, you're right, I don't think I want to jail everyone who, you know, spits on the sidewalk, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm advocating. What I'm advocating, though, is when, when we have, when the officer's engaged with a criminal who they know is a criminal offense and should be jailed, that, that we should be taking them to jail, and if the county releases them, that is, that's on the county, not on, not on the police department and the city police department, and so that we can see that. So that's my, my concern is where we have, we have gotten to the point where, well, there's just, it's too much paperwork, because they're going to release it anyways, so why even bother? And I don't think we should get that way, I think we need to...
No, and that's not the case, councilmember, if you look up here for your quarter-three arrests on warrants, we make arrests, and I would tell you that, so you have misdemeanor and traffic, so whatever that number is, anytime you see a felony, those are most likely, we're going to try to take down to jail, because that, that's a felony, whether, and a lot of them are against people. And, and the, the orders of protection, certainly, those are, are high, high priority, but, you know, I can tell you probably the great number of those misdemeanor municipal and misdemeanor traffic were either notices to appear, or go take care of it. So there's the number, I think, that you're looking for, and you just need to, I mean, we can extrapolate stuff, but you have, you know, revocation and suspended and deferred sentences? You know, so that's, that's the judge is saying, I want to see this person, so we're going to try to take those people to jail, sometimes we get them in, sometimes we don't. But again, please don't confuse the number of people that we arrest on warrants with the people that we, we get into jail, and so there's a, I mean, there's a, you know, twenty-nine, well, three thousand adult arrests in quarter three on warrants, and we issued eleven-hundred notices to appear. So we made arrests and did something with the, with the balance of those.
I understand that, but that, what I, what I think, again, you're right, we, that was just on the warrants, but when now, when we're talking about the non-warrants, it's, the police still have the same judgment that, as I hear, felons are not taken to jail, and, and, you know, I'm sure some of them are, but some of them are not, and they probably should be going to jail. And so I, again, I don't want to, I don't want to bring this, you're right, I think it should be another work session, we need to get into the process, but I'd like to move on to my, my question, really about the officer staffing, it was on slide number two, if we can take a look at that real quick. First of all, I don't think the numbers added up, or I'm not sure how the numbers added up in the sworn personnel, I don't know if eighty-five was the current staff or not, because when I added up, it was one-hundred-and-fifty-seven, unless I added up wrong, so we must be too rough, somewhere too between the sworn personnel staffed and what was, was there. But patrol staff, the eighty-five, that is, the uniforms that are on the street driving, doing, you know, that's who the public sees, correct?
Correct.
And some of those uniforms are also the traffic, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they, they're reflected in the specialized, they're, they are a specialized position.
That's, so the twenty-nine is part of the eighty-five?
No, there's twenty-nine that are carved out for specialized position, the step unit is considered a step, a specialized position, your street crimes unit, your drug unit, your marshal's task force, all of the task forces are specialized units, and that's where you get the twenty-nine. So eighty-five, and that's just patrol, you have twenty-eight in command, so there's a portion of that command, which, which is assigned to the patrol division as well, which increases that eighty-five, because they're, they're working cops as well.
Okay, so we have, we have one-hundred-and-fourteen patrol, and of that, of that one-hundred-and-fourteen, twenty-nine is specialized?
Generally, yes, I mean, some come out of detectives, but I, we'll just roll with the big number.
Okay, all right, because that's what I'm not, I'm trying to figure out, if I add up these numbers, I don't get to the one-fifty-seven, or the six, one-sixty-seven, so I'm not really sure what we have on the street, so if we're supposed to be, if we have eighty-five uniform now, and we're supposed to be authorized for one-hundred-and-sixty-seven, how many more uniforms will we, will the city need?
Well, right now, we need, what we're trying to hire is, I got three pending retirements, that would leave us at one-fifty-six, so help me with the math there, one-sixty-seven and to one, what's that?
Nine.
Thank you, nine. And that's all, I mean, that's retirements and, and CPSM stuff, or...
Eleven, eleven.
Eleven, eleven.
The difference between one-fifty-six and one-sixty-seven is eleven.
One-fifty-six, because we're losing three.
That's true.
One-sixty-seven authorized.
I, I'm not, I'm not looking for the total staff, I'm just looking for patrol, how many it's patrol, what's the total patrol we, we should be having?
Well, total patrol we should be having are, let me see here, so you want to add thirteen.
So we need thirteen more patrol officers to get to full staff?
Well, no, because I've got, I need the, I need the, the one-fifty-nine, what, did we say, nine?
Eleven.
Yeah, so I got, I got to hire that eleven, there's three that are going to retire, there's thirteen, the other that I'm talking about are already hired, but they're wounded, they're FMLA, they're not working the street, okay? So that thirteen number is what I would need to, to fulfill our retirements, our resignations, and safety levy obligations on the patrol side, that's total. Now of that total, we have eighty-five that are, a part of those are going to be, you know, well, matter of fact, all of them are going to be assigned to the patrol division, that's where they all come from, for the most part.
Okay, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Owen?
I have questions for Tina, so I, I don't want...
Okay, Tina?
But, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Owen, go ahead.
Chief, I have two questions. Let's just go back to this conversation about the warrants, just really briefly, and I think you're right, we probably do need a separate work session to sort of talk through incarceration and diversion options, that seems to make sense, but, for that fifty-seven, nope, the other one, on the warrants, that, that fifty-seven. So... So do you have any sense of how many of those 57 people were on some form of pre-trial monitoring?
I do not.
Is that a knowable number? Can we find that out?
It is not. And that was one thing, when you were done with me, I would ask that you are mindful and judicious of what you request, because this stuff doesn't exist in our system, we had to generate it. And so it is, you know, we want to get you the information that you need, our system is not set up for some of the things that you're asking for.
That's fine. My question's a little bit broader. I don't want you to answer this with what's advisable or what your preference is, I just want to know what's the universe. Let's say the city said, forget it. We're not going to be held hostage to what the county decides to do on incarceration. The city has discovered a magical pile of money, and we are going to take some incarceration options into our own hands. What is that laundry list of options? City jail, holding cells? What are the things that would allow us to take some control back in our law enforcement system?
Yeah, both of those things, Councilmember. I think if you have a sobering center of some type-
Someone's incarcerated, they're required to stay there.
No, I'd just say, how about a 24-hour, you know, cooling off, sobering up?
But they're held for 24 hours.
Not necessarily, yeah, they're not bothering you. Okay? And then the other thing, not that I want to get into the jail business, but misdemeanor. If you can get the misdemeanants away from this, then that frees up more space for the felonies. So now, misdemeanor jail, and that is just us. Okay? The sheriffs, they go to justice court, and they do their thing at the jail. Misdemeanors and traffic stuff is city of Billings. And so essentially, that's what you would control, is the misdemeanor stuff. Felonies still would go across the street, but to your, you know, help alleviate what we have going on down there, someplace for somebody to sober up, not necessarily go to jail. You want to, you know, give them the pamphlet with, here's all the help, you can get it, that's good, too. And then a facility to handle your misdemeanor stuff. Other slide, there's, you know, 600 people or something there that we probably could have taken to jail. They spend the night, wait to see the judge, video remand, get what they get, they either stay or they go.
Okay.
With that pile of money.
I appreciate that. And then, the last question I want to ask here, if I wanted to be difficult or rude, I might say we have five traffic officers but two DV investigators. We have, it sounds like launching an identity theft initiative, but we don't have a comprehensive DV initiative. At the end of the day, though, all of those things are post-crime happening, right? And it's not optimal, as you indicated, to just simply try to arrest our way out of family violence, or frankly, any violent assault. I have said, and I think I heard you say, and others have said, we have to do more as a city on prevention. We have to have better prevention strategies, because they don't rest entirely on BPD. They are a community-wide effort to bring together public safety, public health, all sorts of players at the table. But I feel a little bit like I'm yelling into a void when I talk about prevention, because it's hard, and it's complicated, and it takes a long time, and it's hard to measure the outcome. But I still get the sense that there's maybe some pushback in really sitting down and writing, putting ideas and goals onto paper for a prevention strategy. So you be in charge for five minutes. What would it look like for this council to start a comprehensive crime prevention strategy? Who's at the table? How long does it take? How long can BPD wait for this sort of thing to be in place?
Well, certainly, Councilmember, you need all of your partners in the justice system. So we're going to need attorneys and, you know, judges if they want to spend the time. If you're wanting to get into, you know, getting at the root of the problem, of course, some of our prevention specialists, our social services partners, I would certainly want School District Two at the table to do with those issues. And then, of course, enforcement on the back end. So again, it's a, you know, it is a model that's out there, and if council wants to go that direction, where you need to go is get people to the table. Get people to the table to take care of this, and then, you know, what model do you envision? Whether it's prevention, whether it's to help guide the victim through the process, or are we going to hammer on enforcement? And so those are the decisions and the policies that you would make.
Do you think there's ambiguity right now from council as to whether or not they want enforcement, victim services, or prevention?
I do believe that you would like all three. The problem is, is that, as you indicate-
But that's not helpful.
I have two.
Yeah.
Two that are assigned to domestic family crime, they're working with Gina's crew there. Again, it's a capacity issue on what it is, and a hard discussion. I'm just going to say that there are no more cops coming to the police department's way anytime soon. So you got what you got. What is it that you don't want me to do? Do you not want the traffic? I know you don't want the traffic, but some people do. We just had a whole bunch of people here, you know, so you're going to have some hard And another work session there, Mayor, I can see you're looking at the clock, I'm happy to sit down.
Yeah, that's fine. Chris wanted to comment, I'll go to Councilmember Shaw. Chris, on that point, though, before we release-
The other piece I would throw in, which I think fits this, and I fully acknowledge, it's a policy call amongst the 11 of you. As I understand it, for the most part, we cannot, there are technologies that exist, particularly for traffic enforcement. I mean, you know, when you are in some cities in this country, you don't roll through yellow lights, you don't run red lights, you probably, I don't know if they use them in school zones, but I have to imagine there's technology ways to help our situation, not solve it. But as the chief said, I don't see any public safety levy coming in the foreseeable future for more officers. We're going to have to find a way to be more efficient and effective. And right now, the state of Montana doesn't allow us to use technology to the extent that other states do. That may be an area where you guys talk about that. You're not going to solve that overnight, but it is a policy legislative piece, how much traffic enforcement is very labor-intensive, patrolling around, and people like to see that. It's easy for me to say, well, violent crime is the most important thing to tackle and prevention, but that's a policy call and work that's got to be done legislatively, because we literally can't use some of the tools that some other communities, not in Montana, but out of Montana, are using. So just an awareness.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Councilmember Shaw, I had a question for Tina.
Yes, please. And I only have a question for you, but I just wanted to say, chief, chief, Tina, Gina, great job. I really appreciate all this information and the data. So Tina, my question for you is about the legal abatement process, and kind of how can council be more, be a better advocate for your department? In what ways would you like to see us get involved? Because I know we've heard, you know, show up at court when these things happen, but I never know when something's going to be in court, or I don't even know how to really track that. So I guess I would like to kind of just state that, but then also get your take on if there are other ways that council can be more involved. And then, at least for me, a very common, you know, email I'll get or a call is, there's this property here, there's this property there, right? And we send it on to the team, but is that, is the best thing to do, just to get that information to you? And then, how do we follow up with constituents who are asking us what the updates are without overloading you and saying, like, can you respond to these 15, you know, questions every week, which is unreasonable? So it's kind of broad, but-
So as far as court, I think we've got that to the point where we're not going to court as often, or I'm foreseeing that we're not going to court as often as we were. Again, it is for a specific reason, and that is to request that abatement order. So in that respect, I think we've got that handled between legal and the court. So we actually had a really productive meeting. Your next question was about how can council help us? We recently had a discussion with the, both of the CE2 officers, as far as some of the ordinances that they are tasked to enforce, they're specialized. We're looking at perhaps maybe requesting that they get tweaked a little to help us in some areas. So that discussion was as early as last week, or as recent as last week. So those two officers are currently working on the ideas, and will, of course, go through Wyeth and go through that process and discuss with him as well, and use his experience. And as far as the complaints that come into council, feel free to forward them to us. I'm happy to answer your questions. I think most of the time, I already know about the property that you're asking about, and I'm happy to give you whatever updates I possibly can, so you're not inundating me. I have no problem answering those emails.
Okay, thank you. That was kind of my question, too, so that I have a follow-up here, which is, what kind of elevates something to get, now all I can think of it is a strike force, so what kind of elevates something to get to that level? Or is it really, like, all properties are going to go through that eventually, but it gets, it goes through you, you take it to the task force, you work out a plan? I'm just, I'm trying to understand this so that I can explain it to people when they ask questions.
So we're trying to fine-tune those criteria as well. So we don't have, not every property will need to go through that team, and certain properties will rise to the attention of that team before others, and for various reasons. Some of it could be a combination of a police matter and a code enforcement matter, so we need to work together, and so that gets brought up. It could be strictly a dangerous structure, or we have a property owner that is just unwilling to take care of a property, and because of that, it brings in that criminal element. We have a few of those. So it really depends on the property. Police department brings them to our attention, they add to the list, we add to the list, and that's generally where they're generated from, because we see the negatives in those properties. So any property can be considered. We don't have a strict criteria at this point, but if it looks like we're going to need to bring in several departments to handle something, it's probably going to hit the table, and we'll discuss it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. I'll just ask anybody, before we go back, Councilmember Owen, who hasn't asked a question, Councilmember Trekey, and then Councilmember Owen. And we do want a break for public comment, before we have a final break. Councilmember Trekey and Councilmember Owen.
So in the last month or so, I've gotten a number of phone calls from, well, for example, someone living in a trailer, renting in a trailer park, and the owner is not maintaining the premises in there. Is that something you guys are ready to start taking on, or?
Yes. The simple answer is yes. We do have mobile home parks and trailers in mobile home parks, there is a fine line there. So we do have a couple right now that we are dealing with, that the actual structure itself is considered a decaying structure. So we do have some cases like that. We do have to work with the mobile home park, because they are technically the property owner. So, but there's been some very good communication with some of those properties where we are able to move forward, and we get the support from the mobile home ownership.
Yeah. Okay, so essentially, you're saying it's worth a throw of the dice to see if it works.
Absolutely. If it's a property you want us to look at, let us know, and if we can do it, we will.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina, how many of your code enforcement officers are trained in SEPTED principles?
None currently, but it is something that I'm considering.
Okay.
We have talked with the DBA, because Joe is SEPTED, and so some of my CE2s work directly with him, especially with our graffiti issues.
Right.
So we have actually started that discussion.
So if you get to the point where they are trained, are they in a position, when they're repeatedly going back to the same place for being tagged over and over, to say, hey, here's some things you could do to actually, so you have time and capacity to do some of that education as well?
I would like to, actually. The more that we can do in-house, and that we have control over as far as moving forward with our cases, the better. But right now, our partnership with DBA is very good, because a lot of it is happening in the downtown area.
Sure, yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, let's go to the public comment. Thank you, Tina, very much. And this is the opportunity for anybody to comment on this item number one. You kind of know the drill, three minutes, just ask for your time and address. And then, when we're done with public comment, we'll go back, counsel, and if there's general discussion or further questions, we can address those and try to wrap up for a break around 7:30. Ms. Dunn.
Amber Dunn, Dorothy Lane. I don't know what I've personally done to the man in the back to be called a liar yet again, but I personally reached out to the supervisor of this employee, spoke with her. She left work that day and went and sat with him until the end of their day, right before four o'clock, when they had to leave, because no cop showed up. This was not early October, this was the PIR days in October. That's why it was that Thursday or Friday. So he can state whatever he'd like, but I do not come up here with ambiguous information or lies. I get facts before I bring something to your attention. I'm not like that, and I am sick and tired of that man calling me out, making me sound like a liar. So as long as all of you know, I would never bring you false information. I made sure I checked my facts before I brought it to you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Tina, your crew is awesome. We watch them work at our problem house. They are efficient, they get it done, and it looks great.
And Jack and Joseph, you can state your name.
Oh, Jacqueline Garcia, Dorothy Lane. As far as the ring camera goes, no. The officers do not look, take the ring camera footage. Even when you have video threats made, they do not take them. It's under their discretion, as most of the stuff is, of course. We did have several instances where it was recorded that we were threatened. They didn't want the videos. So it's under their discretion when it comes to the ring videos. Your question about marijuana, if the kids are buying it from the dispensaries. I have a 23-year-old, a 20-year-old, and twin 15-year-olds. We've talked about this immensely together. They're buying it off the streets. They're getting it from a friend. They're not going into dispensaries and buying it, because when I go to buy CBD rub or rub for my disease, I'm ID'd when I walk in the door. My 20-year-old daughter cannot walk in with me. They're very, very strict on it. They're getting it off of the streets. That's why the commissioner said they're not going to build a bigger jail until the Mexico border is closed down, because that's where the drugs are coming from. There is, as they put in the newspaper, a transgender area in the jail cell, apparently. So I don't know how many rooms that entails. I don't know any of that, but they do have a transgender area to hold the men in, the person that went to the Billings clinic, they have their own area. I don't know how many rooms that is, but it's something you guys could look into. And then, who is in charge of the ordinance? The, at the beginning, Sean brought in a code, and the ordinance is for methamphetamine houses. If the house is busted for methamphetamines, someone is supposed to go in there and test. And if it is positive, it goes on the list. This hasn't been done in at least two years. When we called the police department, they said Roverstone Health. When we called Roverstone Health, they said, that's BS, we've never heard of it. Another thing falling through the cracks. We talked about redoing our whole justice system because something's wrong. A lot of people and a lot of things are falling through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item number one? Don't see anybody, so we'll close the public comment period. Counsel, general discussion, further questions on the public safety presentation? Is there any? Councilmember Owen?
I just have a couple. Mayor, I don't know how quite you want to proceed, but I think the biggest ones are for Chris. Is that, are you fine with me asking a few more questions?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we've got 10 minutes.
I have a couple fire questions, but I think, chief, I'll just send them by email, if you don't mind responding by email. So Chris, I think we've talked about in council sort of wanting the community to hear the public safety mill levy- Um, so Chris, I think we've talked about in council sort of wanting the community to hear the public safety mill levy update. And I understand there was a desire to bring that to council first. But what's the plan for sharing this information more broadly and really very intentionally around the community, not just at the library, but around the whole community?
It would be to utilize, what we've traditionally done is utilize two groups. Um, the task forces, getting on their agendas to present, uh, and service clubs in the community. The third is when we host a, you know, event at a public space where people can come to. So tho- those have been the three most traditional methods and the anticipation going forward. I think, you know, this conversation, part of what we're going to need to do is boil this down to what, because we can't speak for an hour during one. We'll, we'll have to pull the highlights out of this and communicate it at those levels. So we have reached out to some of those to get on their agendas here before the end of this year. Or mostly, I'm sure they're going to be into the first of the year.
And then I'm really concerned about the report from legal that we can't hire critical positions because we don't have space. I mean, we know that's an issue, but I'm wondering, I mean, I, I feel confident Gina's sort of exhausted her options. But is there not some group or something, I mean, can we not do a group of people over in fourth floor of Stillwater? Or something that would free up some space so we can get these critical? I mean, positions the public are expecting us to hire. Is, do we, have we really, at your level, have you exhausted all the options on, on their behalf?
So i- i- it is, the conversations do continue as we look at where we are with the Stillwater, with, um, with Dick Anderson as our general contractor and understanding what options we have there. We are coming into the point where we're weeks away. Actually, we've gotten some bids. We won't ever take all the options off the table. I, I will tell you, though it may not seem as if it, we've been so aggressive on the hiring side. Our cash flow problem started a week ago. So we literally got to a point where 60 days left in the year, people start paying their taxes. We, we, we needed to move money around in order to continue moving forward. So we're not sitting on cash to rent space or to hire people. Um, so.
How long should we expect to wait then before we can hire the two additional attorneys needed?
I mean, I'm sorry, I kind of asked Gina. I mean, I'm, we.
Well, Gina says she's looked for every spot she could find and she said, she's not going to replace her own secretary because we're that desperate for space.
Yes, we, I mean, come into City Hall, you'll see double office, which is fine as work and people, um.
Okay. It's fine. Um, can we get an updated list of all the CPSM recommendations and their implementation status?
Yes.
Thanks.
And on that topic, I'll just, uh, uh, repeat my offer to, uh, make the mayor's office available, uh, as well. So we've talked about that. Council, uh, Councilmember Boyett, and then I've got a question about marijuana.
A very simple one. The third floor is, half the third floor is already finished. Alls we have to do is put up some partitions, put some desks and chairs in there across from the commissioners. I think that's, is that the third or fourth? Why couldn't we just use that space currently, which wouldn't take a whole lot, just to put some bodies in there? It's just, I was hoping Kevin would be there and I was going to ask him that question.
As we look across that whole building, that, the rest of what's on the third floor, there's, I don't believe there's any HVAC. I mean, i- it's not as far along as you would perceive. Like we could just put cubicles up there and, and, and put people in places. We have looked at using the fourth floor conference room for exactly that. Um, and ultimately it got to the point where the bids and actually getting this construction project underway would start to open up a domino effect with public safety moving out first. Police and opening up spaces there as well as being willing to rent. If, if at the end of the day, it literally is space, we will roll up our sleeves more and say, okay, what, how can we get attorneys on board and get rolling? That's, that's how we've approached on the law enforcement side.
Okay. Um, I'll make this point, and then Councilmember Tidswell. Uh, on the issue of marijuana, I, I, it's my hope that, um, staff will be working on kind of a shopping list. It's, it's Christmas time. So, um, are there things when it comes to mitigating marijuana impacts that council would, or I'm sorry, that staff would like? I recognize we're dealing in an area that's really unknown and so we, we really don't know. But issues like potency testing. Uh, we saw that with the situation at West High, the significance of very high dosages of marijuana. Um, the, the, the regulations to limit potency. Uh, labeling requirements for the amount of potency. Um, testing for impaired drivings, drivers, how do you do that? Um, Councilmember Perrington touched on it, the use of marijuana by minors and enforcement of sales to minors. Um, public information about, uh, driving impacts, marijuana impacts. Um, uh, marijuana dependency and addiction, uh, care. Uh, those are just touching on some of the things, but I'm not sure that, um, we're going there. So I would encourage, I would, I would continue to say that's something we need to talk about. Who's going to do that? And is our police department, is our legal department? Uh, who else is impacted by these things? Or, uh, maybe, uh, the consultant, the guy we had from, uh, uh, Colorado that I think everybody was so impressed with, um, he might be able to give us some guidance. So that's my comment, not really a question. Um, there was, uh, Councilmember Tidswell.
We talked about getting that information out to the public and getting the public knowledgeable on what we just talked about. And you never mentioned the C I O. You never mentioned Victoria. Is there a reason for that? She not, is that not part of her?
Uh, she, she's involved with all of our communications. So.
Perfect, okay.
She, she absolutely works with the police department, their particular communications person and messaging.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Joy, Councilmember Neese.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, you have a partner, uh, in Ward Three working at prevention on, on the crime side. Pre- prevention of crime is very, very important. And one of the things that I've always thought is sort of a missing element of what we think about in crime prevention and talking about domestic violence. Um, not all victims of domestic violence are females. Uh, but there's a huge hole in how we think about our problems, in my opinion. And that is that we don't really start to address the empowerment of girls and women to make their own lives what they want them to be. And domestic violence is not what we grow up to want. We do not want. When we look at it from the education part of it or from, uh, children in schools and we know that those acute childhood, traumatic childhood, um, events or experiences lead to those sets of mindset and, um, mental health issues that lead to crime and victimization. Um, we're, we're really missing, I believe we're really missing out when we don't talk about self-esteem and empowerment of girls and women to, um, make those decisions to have lives that are, are without violence. So I'm a partner in that. Thank you.
Uh, uh, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Neese. And we'll try to wrap up here.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just real quick regarding the public information you're going to get out to the public. I think it's really important that we, we cut through some of the, the numbers and stuff and really show what the public were doing for them. And like, you know, the, the response times that wasn't in this presentation, things like that, that the public is looking for. What we hear often from them is, is, you know, of what, what some of the complaints are. People going to jail because they did, you know, they did the crime, they do the time, things like that. So I want to, or, you know, prevention, what kind of programs are we doing to, it's going to in, in, you know, impact that the, the crime in the future. So I think that we need to, um, make sure that it's not just a bunch of stats and numbers. Um, and, you know, I, I, I would like to know how many officers, you know, we had before this public safety and now we, we're paying our taxes and how many officers we have on the street now before. And I think the people want to know that too because they'll feel safer knowing if we have more officers out there, uh, patrolling. And, and so I think a lot of this information we give out to the public, this is great background information and, and, but I, I think we need to be more geared towards the public. Um, and the only other question I had is, you know, you mentioned a comment, Chris, and I'd like to hear from Andy on this. It's about, uh, cash move to pay bills. Is that typical this time of year, Andy? Or, or is this something new, uh, that you haven't had to do in years because of surpluses?
Uh, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Neese, this is new. We've, because of the purchase of the Stillwater building and the setting aside of funds for that construction, reserves were down slightly below the minimum at year end. So this is the first time we've had to do that.
And, and how, is, since you've ever been here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And is that?
Over a decade.
And that's probably expected. Is that something that we have, the city has to worry about as far as funding programs and services?
Um, no, but that's why we have minimum reserves and it's important that we don't go below those. So.
Okay. So are we borrowing money to, to pay the bills?
Um, from ourselves, yes.
From ourselves, okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Count, uh, Council, are we about ready to wrap up? Councilmember Ripses, Councilmember Treekey, hopefully we'll be done.
Thank you, Mayor. Real, just real quick, on these, um, getting the public information out, uh, I think Roy's exactly right. And that the, the message needs to be very different than what we heard tonight and then much more comprehensive. Um, but i- you know, you mentioned the task forces and the service clubs. And I think that hits a certain, uh, the, the service targets, the service clubs are probably a bigger audience than the task forces because they're, they don't really get that many, much population. I wonder if there's a way we can work with the school district, um, to, you know, work with the PTAs and sponsor some public safety nights in the schools, um, that might get a broader audience than, say, the task forces or, um, or those service clubs. Um, I think it's, it's important almost to approach it almost as like a town hall or a, a, a roadshow to, to really get, um, get those conversations going. So, uh, just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Treekey?
Um, we'll be talking about this again during the council discussion thing because I, I want to bring it up as, uh, as a general conversation about where we're going about education and public education and whatnot. But I just want to emphasize that the single lowest hanging fruit that is missing in our toolkit right now is public education. We're not out there telling people, you know, hey, you know, this stuff, it says on the packages what's in them, but it doesn't tell people what's going to happen if you eat, do two of them. You know, and, and that's just one simple example of the education stuff that's going on there. Um, you know, from running red lights on, you know, we are not telling people to do these things. And, um, or to not do those things. So anyway, yeah. Um, I want to see us, um, have a good conversation about that and how to figure out how we can move that forward.
Okay. Uh, Chris?
Mayor, Council, I just want you to know with the multidisciplinary, multi-jurisdictional teams, and there's more than the property, that's one of them. There's also working on family violence, which is another broader term than domestic violence. Part of what's being asked of them, and recognize how many months they've been operational, is as they see operational problems, bringing them to Kevin and I and department directors so we can resolve issues. If there are policy issues that need to be fixed or legislative things to help make them more effective, that'll get pushed up that way too. So those things, recognize they've been on the ground for months and they will not just report out their effectiveness. They also will be asking us for things worked to do to allow them to be more effective legislatively. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council, we've got 189-page, uh, C I P ahead of us. And we're going to go through every page tonight. So, and then we've got SEPTED after that. So let's take a break and, um, we'll be back, uh, no later than, uh, 20 till, uh, 8:00. So, uh, 7:40. We had an enjoyable vacation in the last seven minutes or whatever we had. Before we jump into item number two, our CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, I'm going to ask Councilmember Boyett to make a very important observation or announcement. Councilmember Boyett?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow is Election Day. So, everybody, if you haven't voted, I'm going to be at the Metra for 16 hours, standing there, watching people vote. So, I'm going to be there in case you can't vote. There's a good place for you to come to vote. This is the most important day of the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyett, for doing that on behalf of all of us. Let's hope that we get you home to get a good night's sleep. Okay. Our next item up, item two, is our Capital Improvement Plan, fiscal year '24 to '28. Finance Director Andy Zeller is our presenter. This is, my understanding, to be a relatively high-level overview, but you'll notice if you look around, we've got many department heads with us, parks, planning, public works, we're, we get, we've already talked to public safety. But, with that, Andy?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is high level. I've got a lot of slides with a lot of information. We're not going to go through them all in detail, but kind of if you just got it, if we want to come back to it, whatever you guys want to talk about. Some of you, this is your first year going through the CIP, so we'll kind of start at the beginning, I guess. So, each year, the city proposes, or the city staff proposes a five-year capital improvement plan. It's forward-looking to identify, you know, what facilities and infrastructure needs are coming up here at the city, and it's presented to council for adoption. That first year in the CIP is, this is really the first step in the budget. You're not authorizing these projects to happen, you're not authorizing staff to issue debt at this point, but you are signaling that, yes, we do want you to continue to pursue these projects. They are a priority, and when you bring the budget to us, we want them in there. And, when you adopt the budget, that's when you give us official go-ahead on those. But, that's generally the point of the CIP, in addition to identifying these projects that are, you know, four or five years out. So, when the time comes for those projects to happen, we've got funding in place or we've taken the steps necessary to make those happen, whether that's increasing rates, setting aside money, or preparing to issue debt. So, what projects are in there? Projects that cost more than $25,000, have a useful life of more than one year. These typically include new construction, acquisition, rehabbing existing property. Things that are not in there, vehicles, we have a separate plan for vehicles and rolling stock equipment, general repairs and maintenance, and operational items. Those are not going to be in your CIP. It is just a plan. Again, it's not, not setting budget or giving authority to proceed with these projects, it's giving general direction. So, the five-year CIP covers FY '24 to '28, totals $523 million over a variety of areas. I'm going to take this time to explain, the CIP book, which I believe was attached to your memo, it's available online, and I'll show you guys where. Generally categorizes the projects by three areas or in three different ways. It's all the same information, it's just depending on how you want to view it. So, one of the areas is categorized by department, which is what you see up here. Another area is categorized by fund, which really only matters for budget purposes. And then, the other area is categorized by funding source. So, that may be debt, or assessments, or taxes. So, when you're in the book, you'll find those. First, I'm going to guess it's 50 to 60 pages, probably are the same information categorized different ways, and I've got a lot of it summarized here. Just showing here, the project breakdown by department and fiscal year. Very commonly, utilities and transportation, public works projects make up the majority of the CIP, they're capital-intensive, and then airport projects usually make up the bulk of it. This year, we do have the rec center in the CIP. It's a very large project, identified there in FY '25, right in the middle of your screen. Here it is, by funding source, the majority of projects funded by debt. These are long-term, large projects that typically we issue debt for. We don't amass funds, usually, and then pay cash for large capital projects. Here again, $523 million. I think that's different from $524. Better make a note of that one. There, I did notice today, again, there were some categorizing errors that I need to fix, but I think generally the plan is still, is still accurate. The FY '24 amounts, again, if you adopted the plan as presented, $80 million would go into the FY '24 budget for the capital projects that are identified there. Here, I've got these for every department. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on any of them, except parks, which I think, in my opinion, are probably some of the more pressing items, given the steps that would have to happen going forward for them. Airport projects largely funded by federal grants and charges to the airlines. The main one there I'll highlight is the rental car garage. I think that's four, three or four rows down from the top there. Car rental parking garage in 2028. Small projects at MET, electric vehicle bus chargers, as you're aware, we're getting some electric buses, so they're making some improvements for that. Here, facilities, there's a planned expansion of the fleet services bays and, or fleet services area, and then adding new wash bays. And so, there's some major projects planned there for that, that'll allow, I believe, for more safer working conditions with the compressed natural gas solid waste trucks. And, some improvements to our parking garages. Parks and rec. Here, they're broken out by parks, recreation, and cemetery. It was, it was brought to my attention that I may have miscategorized some recreation and parks projects, but they're all under the parks and rec category. And, these are the parks projects, not by funding source, just by department. The recreation and cemetery projects, and here you see a $98.7 million community rec And, this one I broke out, these are PD-1 projects that are, these are projects planned to be funded with PD-1 funds. One exception here, the Poly Vista Park Playground, you see an FY '24 column for $1 million. That is an anticipated donation from Landis Legacy Foundation. So, that is not PD-1 assessments that would pay for that, it is a donation. Otherwise, everything else, I believe, is funded with PD-1 assessments. And, the reason I've highlighted in gray, FY '25 and beyond, those are the projects that if PD-1 is not continued or replaced with another funding source, those projects, there would be no funding for those projects, as you're aware, the sunset timeline coming on that. Parks projects funded with debt. So, there are some parks projects in there that would require bonding, and just want to highlight the, I guess, three major ones in there. The community rec center, which, this is the, what we'd be asking the general public to vote on, nearly $70 million, that would not be funded with TIF revenue bonds. For the rec center, about $16.5 million for South Park Pool, it's in some major need of repair. And then the water reservoir site improvements. Obviously, there are other projects there as well that we've identified recommending for bonding. Each page, in the back of the book, you will find a page for each specific project, and it'll, it'll talk about the project, generically, what, why it's important, why staff's recommending it. It'll also show the kind of funding timeline for expenses and revenue. This is the bottom portion for the rec center. I pulled it out for two reasons. One, I wanted to highlight it, and two, I wanted to show you, walk you through what one of them looks like so you're familiar when you look at any of them. But, the anticipated plan here is to enter into a design engineering contract in FY '24, and then construction in FY '25, that will require borrowing to do it at $98 million. The proposed funding for this is a combination of TIF bonds from the South TIF District, and then general obligation bonds. You see that, all information there, like I said, each project has that in the back of your book. Transportation projects, these are the planning department projects. Most of these are always one year out. When they're part of the CIP, the planning department's able to pursue grants and try to find funding for them when they're identified in our CIP. So, we include them one year out in an effort to pursue funding for these projects. Not much to add there beyond that. Now, public works projects, there's a lot of them, as you saw at the beginning, they make up the majority of the CIP. Don't know if there's anything specific I was going to highlight here on any of these, but they, they make up a significant portion here. It's a lot of your annual programs for street maintenance and utility projects. So, total public works projects there, $264 million over the five years. And, I'm going to cut here to show you the city's website, what we have. I don't remember if last year this was working when I did the presentation or not, but we have a map online that has all projects mapped. That's a screenshot of it, and I'm going to pull it up here. Actually, I think I can share my screen from here and do it. And, it, it'll allow you to identify projects in your neighborhood, or maybe your... So, if you go to billingsmt.gov/cip, it will redirect you to this website. So, here you will find the current proposed CIP, the actual document. You'll find last year's approved CIP, and you can submit a project request form, anyone in the public can, not just council members. And then, you can find the project map, and it'll click on the link and go there, and I'm just going to show you how that works. I think it's a really neat feature. I want to thank the GIS department, they were very instrumental in getting this functioning, and it's better than it was last year. So, you can, it has prior year information. The idea here is that eventually, in the future, we can say, yes, we do, do a lot all around town, and here's some demonstration to show that. The size of the circle indicates the relative cost of the project. You do see a lot around the airport, through all your airport projects, and then down here at the Billings Operations Center, you'll see a lot. And that's where a lot of projects that don't necessarily have a defined location, an annual street program, we've put them there because we don't know what streets specifically we're going to be doing in '28, but we know we want to commit funds to maintaining streets. But, that's not the case everywhere. So, for example, here, you can click on a, click on it, it'll come up, say, okay, that's Stagecoach Trail in that area, takes the information from the pages in the back of the book, talks about your projects. If there's a picture, it'll be there, and so it should have all the information you need. You can, you know, remove years or select only years you want to see. I think ward name, let's see, I haven't even, you can narrow it down to your ward. So, when you're giving your presentations at your task force or PTA meeting, if you want me to come, I'd be happy to do it, but we can, we can show that. I think it's a really neat addition. So, this is two years in the making, but we're there. So, now I'll stop sharing and go back to the presentation. Yeah, it was, it was our GIS in combination with Public Works Project, I believe, that was doing it. But, yeah, it was, it's great. Okay. Now, I think I'm almost done, Mayor. All right, so that was that. There are parks projects that are not in the CIP. If you were paying attention, you noticed that none of the large park projects that have been discussed in recent past, this is the same slide from last year, they are not included in there. So, I'm highlighting this for your information. If council says, hey, we really want to include this project or that project, especially as we pursue a bond, I want to make, make it abundantly clear that some of the major park projects you guys have been talking about are not in the CIP. And not because staff doesn't think they're not important, but I think there's direction that needs to be given on some of that, and I know you guys are working on that as well. So, what are we looking for? Where are we going? Again, general discussion tonight, you know, are there projects you want more information on? Is there process you want more information on? Are there projects you want to see removed or added? And then, I believe Chris has scheduled us for every night for the rest of the year. For the next two work sessions, if council desires, we can bring information back on the CIP, whatever you guys want, and it'll be before you for adoption at one of your December meetings, and I apologize, I don't know which one offhand right now. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. Again, staff here to answer questions and go wherever council wants to go.
Okay, great, Andy. Council, we're going to have some questions, I'm sure, for department heads, but it's going to be a little complicated. They're going to come up, and they're going to sit down, they're going to come up again, blah, 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 blah. So, we'll try to concentrate around certain department heads when we get one in front of us. But, for right now, let's start with Andy. Are there any high-level kind of procedural questions? Are there any high-level kind of procedural questions for Andy? And then we'll move on to another department head, whoever that might be. Councilmember Purinton, Councilmember Boyett?
Not specific. It's not for Andy.
It is? It is not. Okay, let's hold off on that then. For Andy, Councilmember Boyett, Councilmember Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two questions. One is, seriously, how realistic are these numbers? I mean, in the real world today, they may not mean anything. Just by shopping around, I'm wondering if these are real numbers. That's my first question. What do you think, Andy?
So, that's a great question. Up until about a year ago, I'd have said I think they're pretty accurate, but we're realizing some of those weren't all that accurate, given the inflation. So I'm not sure how to answer that question, largely they're based on what we know today, anticipating some inflationary growth. But yeah, we don't know what will happen, so.
Okay. That's what I thought you'd say.
Yeah, not sure how to answer that.
And second, over the years, the last four years anyway, when I come to you and say, well, why is the budget this big? Well, you approved the CIP. And that's, so it's in there, so we're going to do it. So how do we, at some point, we have to say, is the CPI too much? How do we reduce these numbers? When's the best time for the council to come to you and say, cut out number four, number six, add number seven, get rid of number eight, that kind of thing?
So I think this is a good time, I mean, you know, to have this discussion. Obviously, when you adopt the CIP, it'd be important at that point, if there was consensus on a project, or whether it being in there or not, that's a great time to get it out of there or add one in. And then, again, at the budget, which is really, again, when you give authority on those first-year projects. But if you're looking at something out there in FY28, and you're saying, we do not need a car rental parking garage at the airport, get that out of there, you know, that's the time to do it for, you know, kind of guiding staff in a direction that council wants to go. Does that answer your question? All right.
Okay, Councilmember Owen and Councilmember Neese had his hand up.
Thanks, Mayor. So I would just note for my colleagues that we do have the CIP agenda on our First Budget Committee agenda coming up on November 16th, so we'll get a chance to work on it there as well. Andy, without creating a huge amount of labor, is it possible to create sort of the one chart? The chart that lists the project, the fiscal year, the total, the fund, and the source? Is that feasible? Just adding essentially two columns to what you've given us here?
I think it is, and I have most of that built. I'll just need to add fund and funding source.
Is that, that wouldn't be a huge amount of work?
Not at all.
Okay. Can we get that in Excel sheets so we can sort? Some people might like it alphabetical. I'd rather see it by fiscal year, so.
So, yes, there will be two issues with it. If when there's a, when there's multiple funding sources, I may just duplicate the project on there. Or when there's multiple years, I'm thinking specifically about the rec center, there's two funding sources over multiple years.
I see.
So it'd show up on there potentially a few times.
But I don't mind it where you bracketed the years it goes over.
Yeah.
I mean, the way you have it on the sheets in this presentation strikes me as fine, but obviously, if the funding sources change throughout that period, I understand the complexity.
Yeah, I'm sure I can come up with something that works. And I'm pretty close to having it already.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Neese? Andy, are we going to be able to get paper copies of the CIP?
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't have any, but I'll get, how many should I, maybe by show of hands?
One.
Just one?
I think just one.
Okay. Yeah, all right. I'll get one for you. Two? I'll get some out. I'm happy to do that. It's a new group. I wasn't sure how many didn't have computers.
There's a few oldies around here still.
Okay. I know, we've made them in the past. I'll get some.
They don't have to be spiral and in color? No, no color.
Well, don't put limits on Andy.
Yeah. I wasn't going to make them in color anyway, so you've seen my presentations. Get a few printed.
Okay, other questions for Andy on process? He's not going away if it comes up later.
I'll be here for the next rest of the year.
All right. Now, council, who wants, now, which department? Councilmember Shaw?
Can we do parks?
Parks.
So Director Whitaker has questions about South Park Pool. And I know I've sent you an email about this, and you got back to me, which was great. Specifically, I'm wondering, I know there's an aquatic, there's an aquatic study that's still in there for next year, and then the South Park Pool plan is a couple of years out. I'm wondering, is there capacity to move that up when you're in your department right now, to speed that process along a little bit? The, I guess what I'm thinking is, this aquatic study is $100,000, a little over that, but is it going to take a whole year to do that before some decisions can be made to move forward on the South Park? I mean, I'm just going to try and champion this because it's so important for our community that we only have these two pools. One is in such disrepair, as we all know, stopped working this summer. I just would like to see that resolved as quickly as possible. So I, years out seems like a long time to wait.
Well, Councilmember Shaw, probably the most important project is that aquatic study. That will tell us the size and the scope of what South Pool should be. And I agree with you. We just recently learned that we could have structural issues at South Pool, but we did have a structural engineer to come out, and he's recommending some fixes to solve that problem. But like with a lot of facilities, we don't know from year to year. So I think there's capacity to move it forward, yes.
Okay. But it really is still a couple of years. I guess I just look at these numbers, and I think, is there no way that we can move forward with the changing rooms, for instance, faster? Is there no way that, I understand waiting for the study, and I think that's good. We should do that. I just, it seems like we're waiting a whole year for a study.
Councilmember Shaw, I think we should make sure we have a good concept to work from and start, instead of start piecemealing out there. Because that pool was built back in 1920, and that's why we had a concern and brought a structural engineer out. I would hate to come back or put in a new bathhouse and realize that the pool's going to cave in. So I want to make sure we do our due diligence. I think we can do what we can to speed up the process, and from what we just learned lately, we need to do that.
Yeah, that would be great. I guess, just the follow-up question is, I'd like to know how long that study would take to complete. Is it just a couple of months, or?
Councilmember Shaw, I would think anywhere from three to six months.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, I've got some questions, a number of them. I'll kind of try to go quick, and not really necessarily questions as much as things to get on your radar screen, or some are questions. But the first one is, there's about, I think, $60,000 for the pathway through the Centennial Park, Dog Park area. Now it's wood chips and gets kind of muddy in low spots, and it's kind of messy, so that makes total sense. But the, there's a water fountain in there that's a mud hole because it's kind of in a low spot. I'm assuming, as part of that path process, that fountain will be, could be located on a concrete pad, lifted up, so you don't have that mud problem continuing. Has that been part of the thinking? So that's one.
Mayor, we think we can solve the mud problem. I think Parks will be working on that the very near future. We're going to enlarge the French drain to, so it can hold more water, because that drains right into a French drain. So we're going to enlarge that to hopefully solve the mud problem.
Okay, yeah, that French drain is on the side of that west end, you know, the water fountain is more on the east end. So, but anyway, just to alert you to that. The Dealer Park turf replacement is on for two or three years into the future. I think it's $400 and some thousand dollars. Of course, we all want to see Dealer Park used for more than just the, whatever the number of baseball games are. So that would be a good time to look into the pads, which are very expensive, or whether it's worth biting the bullet for artificial turf. I don't know whether that solves, it probably doesn't solve the problem of, you know, putting people on it. But just want to highlight that, I guess, on your radar screen, that if we're going to spend that money anyway, we want to make sure it's done right.
Mayor, you bring up a great point. We, over the last year, or probably a year and a half, we've been having discussions with MSUB's baseball coach and about coming back with a artificial turf field instead of a standard grass, standard grass field. So, and I think it's very likely that we'll probably come back with a proposal to do artificial turf. And they are open to do majority of the fundraising. And our portion could possibly be what it would have taken to do a turf field. So it's in discussions.
Okay, great. When Northwestern Energy started construction, or before they started construction, on their extension of the substation in Swordsmarck Park, we got them to put in a berm, which is hiding and making a difference, I think, in the appearance. But also Northwestern Energy, I forget the details, but transferred to us a piece of property to use as a parking area below Kelly Mountain, right? And there's no money in here for development of that or a trail up. Is that a possibility that should be added to the CIP to make better use of that? And I'm just not familiar enough with the lay of the land to be more specific, and I apologize about that.
Mayor, I've heard the same thing, but I haven't had an opportunity to sit down with Kevin Plon from the airport to discuss more of the specifics. But yeah, that's something we could definitely consider.
Okay. And then last, the big question, the Sea Parks, that long list of park construction that was not included in the CIP, anywhere from, I think, $35 to $70 million. Of course, that's dependent upon passage of a mill levy or large bond issue. How are we going to, it seems like it'd be very difficult to distinguish between those. Do you have an opinion at this stage about whether we should be including all or some of those in the CIP?
Mayor, we hope to bring back a recommendation on November 21st. We also will present that recommendation at the Parks Board this coming Wednesday. So I would highly encourage, if anyone's interested, to get a sneak preview of what's going to come to council, drop by the Parks Board meeting tomorrow, or Wednesday, 11 o'clock, and we'll provide lunch.
Okay. All righty, thanks. Councilmember Joy, Councilmember Purinton?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This question is from Mr. Whitaker. You have new park development projects, not in the CIP on that slide. The last two are satellite maintenance facilities, $600,000, one in the Heights and one on the West End. There's been a lot of discussion about efficiencies and how we invest in things that are part of the efficiencies that we expect from the Parks Department, but not only Parks, but across the board. So can you remind me, what year did we have the satellite maintenance facilities? I certainly remember the one for the Heights. What year did we have that in the CIP? I believe that was a project that was moved back, or not moved back, wasn't it?
Councilmember Joy, we recommended it a couple of years back, and it was removed. But we're definitely, we'll be coming back with our recommendation on 21st that will highlight those facilities.
And just to follow up, on the West End Satellite Maintenance Facility, do you have a proposed location for that, or some more concrete things? Are these looking to be in the CIP closer to this year or farther out? Thank you.
Councilmember Joy, we have not identified an exact location yet. We've only identified the region, one on the west end and one in the Heights, but we haven't identified a facility yet. The Casserac Master Plan has a small storage facility in the concept. At this time, we don't know for sure if it would be adequate, but we're definitely going to explore that.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to Councilmember Purinton, Chris, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, we're also looking at the recently purchased Back Fire Station 8 as a consideration in that same use, especially in the near term, where it's being used, where we anticipate using it for the MRTs, not as a fully-staffed fire station. So it isn't the, I'm not saying it's the long-time permanent solution, but I certainly think it provides us with a near-term, excellent, affordable option for the Heights piece.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Purinton?
Thank you. One question that I did have on the slides that Andy put in there, it was the one on the bonding slide. And there were several projects that were to be included in the bonding. But then the very next year, there were some very large ones, you know, like the South Pool renovation. And there's a couple of, you know, $1.6 million for 2026, I guess is what it is. So I'm wondering why you would put, like, 196, there was another one, 196 at the top. Anyway, why would you put those smaller projects in a bond, but yet you leave the next year, 26, with some major expenses, expenditures? Why would you flip some of those around, or why would you not put them all in one bond?
Councilmember Purinton, we're constantly balancing, it's a balancing act that we're trying to keep from closing other facilities due to other issues, but it's a balancing act.
Okay, yeah.
And would they have to be separated in separate bonds, or just those are, when the money gets expended?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the CIP is generally timed lined, that the funds are in the year in which we think we will enter into a contract. So I think with the swimming, all three of those are swimming, we would do some sort of design function up front and then construction on the back. And it would, I would imagine, we would do one bond for both years there. So it would be a total bond of $97 million for all of that.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then it'd just be over a few years.
It was a question for you. But I do have one for Mike. So Mike, I keep, and it's in color, too, the Parks projects, the critical improvements, sustainable improvements, and visionary improvements. And I know one year, we, maybe it was a couple of years ago, we went over some of the critical improvements and what they're, you know, where we are with those. So I'm trying to see for the next five years on the CIP, what those projects are compared to the critical ones. And I know these are improvements, but they're still CIP projects, and some that are in critical are not here, but yet there's a couple that, especially in the sustainable department. So I'm just wondering where this list is in Parks Department making the decisions, which ones go on a CIP? And did their categories of critical to sustainable to visionary, do those change? And this was 2017, so we're getting, we're five years out from that. So where are we with this list that I keep as my, kind of my park bible?
Councilmember Purinton, I can provide you an updated list on where we're at as relates to the projects that were recommended in the comp plan and what has been completed. But we, when we choose projects, we base everything on five criteria, which include health, safety, and welfare. That's our top priority. And the second priority is preventing closures. Third is state and federal compliance laws. Fourth is survey responses. And an example of survey responses, we had closed two tennis courts at Lilis Park due to the condition of those courts. And the survey responses kept telling us that this, this community needed pickleball courts. That's why when we came back, we turned those courts into pickleball courts, or those courts into pickleball facilities. And the last area that we look at is efficiency savings. So those are the five criteria that we look at when we look at projects over, and we look at maintenance reports and that kind of thing.
So how does that, what you just said, how does that equate into how this list is drawn up? Because I don't know, I know they're categorized or prioritized, but how does that equate into what you just told me, what is here and what is here? And here, I mean by the 2017 to our CIP projects. How does that equate?
Councilmember Purinton, what we do is, we look at that list that you're referring to, then we talk to park maintenance. And they'll provide us a list of things that we didn't look at because we're at risk of closing. Okay, if we're at risk of closing... we didn't look at because we're at risk of closing. Okay, if we're at risk of closing an amenity, that will move higher on the list. But we, that's our master list that we have, what you have in front of you.
This one is the master list?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ripses?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, just a couple of quick comments. First, on the Centennial sidewalks that the mayor was mentioning, it's currently listed in there at sixty-two thousand. We know that's not going to be enough to do all the sidewalks in the dog park. I think we should include the entire estimate of what we expect that to cost. And the excess might have to be chalked up to private donations or some, some other funding source other than the remaining construction funds from Centennial. But I think that, you know, we should at least be planning to do the entire project, and if we need to find other funding sources, we should. So this, I think the CIP should be updated for that. Another thing is, I know it's years out, but I've said this before, I do not support using cash-in-loue funds for the department comp plan update. And I know that's F I twenty-seven, something like that. But those funds are specifically supposed to be used to improve parks in the neighborhood where those, in the area of where those subdivisions are being created. And so we need a different funding source for that. It cannot be cash-in-loue, in my opinion. Then the other two things, I think, related to Councilmember Shaw's comment about South Park and the aquatics study in general. I'm not comfortable having three splash pad projects on there at one point eight million dollars each, especially before this, or even having that number in mind when we do the aquatic study. I think that's kind of setting, setting some expectation that we're okay if that aquatic study comes back and says, we're going to spend five and a half million dollars on three different splash pads. And I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not sure if the community would be comfortable with that. That seems to be exorbitant and out of range for what we would expect a splash pad to be. And I know, you know, it was based on what South Park splash pad cost years ago and adjusted for inflation, that kind of stuff. But I just, I'm not comfortable with that, setting that expectation that we're going to be okay with having one point eight million dollar splash pads. So I think if we don't have a more realistic number of something to put in there, maybe we need to think about how we're putting those, or even if we're putting them in the CIP at all, until that aquatic study comes back. And then finally, related to the, the Sea Park projects, you know, the mayor has a saying that he who has the load writes the rules. And thus far, every one of those, you know, Casa Rock, Centennial, Cottonwood, Colson, and Poly Vista, all have had private donors groups raising money to do things in those parks. Yet, the Rec Center, we haven't had any of the groups pushing, the interest groups pushing that, raise any private or commit to any private funding. And we haven't had any private interest in supporting amenities at, at the water reservoir yet. And I'm not saying that we should favor these over those, but what I think the CIP does is, the way it's written now, it kind of presumes that any bond we issue, if we issued a hundred million dollars in bonds, it will be used for those projects and not these. And I don't know that we've had that discussion, and I think Chris kind of, you know, said this a bit, but we haven't, we haven't decided that those are what the priorities are. And so I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with how the CIP is presenting these. I love seeing that we're going to invest in our community, and that these, these projects are being prioritized. I'm just not sure that we've got the right ones prioritized yet, because we haven't collected all that community feedback, and we're trying to do that. But I wish there were a better way to represent that we want to make this size of a commitment in our community, but they may or may not be the Rec Center or any of these particular projects. I'm not sure how we would do that. I'm just not comfortable with where this is right now, because we haven't had those other conversations. And I don't want to set things up for next year and set people's expectations, because we passed the CIP, and then we were like, and then we have the conversations, and suddenly we pick some other, something else. So anyway, those were my comments on that, no real questions, but I.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Joy, Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know we're not quite to the discussion point, but how about a return on investment as a criteria for which parks get bonded? Not just a suggestion.
Might be a little hard to measure that one, but good goal, good goal. Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, I have to agree with your comments. I, I think, Mike, I think that he's got, he's got some points there about, you know, the council hasn't really been involved in some of the priority projects. In the past, the council had discussed priority parks. We had three at one time that kind of fell off the priority list when we looked at our priorities. But I think that is something that we need to talk about, because if you're looking at, you know, bonding the facility, the Rec Center, and then you got the also, then all of these, these, I mean, we're talking a lot of money out there that needs to be done in projects. And if we're going to bond it, I mean, I think if you went to the voters and had an option, you know, you're going to invest in these parks versus the Rec Center, they're probably going to choose these parks. And that they're going to, this is going to be probably a lot more usable for a lot of the families over the Rec Center. So I, I'm, I think we have to have that conversation. And so, thank you, Tom, for bringing that up. I think that's something that we need to really figure out what some of the priorities are. And on the, on the South Park Pool, one of the things I, I wonder about this aquatic centers, because we're talking about now, if this pool is not able to be used and not just, not reconditioned, but actually completely rebuilt, we're going to have to rebuild a pool. At what point, I think the North Park Pool, that what, you know, when we did the Dealer Park, we got rid of the North Park Pool, and maybe it's time that the, this South Park Pool is gotten rid of as well, because we're going to be putting a Rec Center on the south side where a lot of people can go for pool and recreation. And that's going to be the Rec Center, a pool facility. And that may happen to Rose Park someday. If Rose Park gets so old and antiquated, maybe we won't reinvest in that, because pools are going to be something different. So I, I think we have to, when this, hopefully this, this facility's evaluation is going to take in the need of the whole community as far as pools, and not just, you know, what, what needs to be done in that pool. Because we're going to have some, we're going to invest a lot of money in that Rec Center with a lot of good pool facilities there. So I'd like to hear more about, you know, really, is there a conversation of, are you considering maybe, is it even on the table to not go with the South Park Pool and maybe invest that money into the South Rec Center?
Councilmember Neese, I would recommend that we wait and see what the aquatic study says, because part of the aquatic studies is garnering public input on aquatics. So I would recommend we wait and see what that tells us. But as relates to South Pool, I didn't mean to mislead you that we had major structural issues. It appeared that we had, and we just had a structural engineers just to verify that the pools will be safe for this up and coming year, and it will be safe.
I see. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Mayor, if you don't mind, a couple other things. You know, we've talked about this twenty seventeen comp plan. I think, I'd like to hear your department find a way to get this updated, and maybe present that on the CIP to do that. Because, you know, this is a five-year-old plan. By the time we, if we started it today, it'd be, take another year or two to get established and out. And so I think, you know, this is some old data. And, and so I don't see that, maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see that where it's on the plan. Is that, is that something that we're doing? Is that something we're planning on doing to do a whole new comprehensive study or update the study?
Councilmember Neese, I would think we would update the current plan, but that would basically be almost a completely rewrite, too.
Okay.
And that is in the plan?
Yeah, okay, it's in there. All right, it is, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could, not only is it in the plan, I want a full recognition, the Parks Department and Mike pushed that it be sooner, I and we pushed it back, with the recognition that there's so many projects in the plan that haven't been done, that to a degree, what do we need to spend money telling us that we didn't get done some of the projects? So there is a balance to this, for sure. And I just emphasize, your adopted priorities for this year include making these decisions. So I fully recognize this is kind of messy, right? We have recreation moving, we have parks moving, we have trails discussions, and recognize where we're coming from. We're coming from just a couple of years ago, where if we didn't have the cash to build these kinds of projects for the general fund, we just pretended like we'd never needed to deal with them, whether it was a police station, a city hall, or a Parks investment. So I do appreciate the kind of, you see it, the uneasiness. You got literally tens of, a hundred million plus in these projects, and it is very, it is this very capital improvement planning process, we kind of, kind of figure out by adoption, what's going to float to the top and be funded. Thank you.
The Parks Comp Plan is set in there for fiscal year twenty-seven, so five years from now is the, the end of the CIP for a hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, so.
Okay, so it'll be a ten-year, ten-year update instead of five?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, Mayor, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, and then let's, we'll try to move to Public Works or Planning.
Something that didn't reappear on, on Andy's list of things that we had talked about in the past, which I think are important, are the pavilions that were, were out there. So I think that's something that we need to consider adding in there and seeing how we can get that funded, especially if we're going to go out for a bond. Or if we're going out for a bond for the full Casa Rock or some of the other parks, that'll be in there. And so I think there's some, we want to make sure that pavilion's in there. I would like to talk more about the satellite facilities, because I, I'm concerned about co-loading, locating them at the Parks facilities themselves. I like the idea of doing some temporary stuff, at least to get some of the efficiencies kicked off right away. I think that's a good idea. And maybe there's some additional property, whether it's on the West End, in the Heights, that becomes available and that. But that's, that's, so far, that's what I've seen on it. But I'll, I'll let you know more if I come across stuff.
Councilmember Neese, I definitely agree in regards to co-locating the maintenance yard next to the fire station. I, the fire station usually provides twenty-four-seven security force, so I, I definitely encourage that.
Okay. Okay, Council, if it's okay, we'll move to a different apartment. But Mike, don't go away, because, okay, things may still come up, people may want to come back to it. So how about questions either for Planning or Public Works? Your choice. Councilmember Gillick?
I think we start with Planning. I have, so these are projects that, I love the list of projects that we see here, and I know that, that some of them, a lot of them are grant-funded, so there, there are challenges, or that, you know, we have to have them on our CIP to, to go after grants, and we don't always get all the grants. But I think on the Fifth Avenue Corridor, I was just wondering if, so I, the, we've got two thousand, two hundred and five thousand dollars, which is more design and planning for that. Is there any way we can put something in the, in the CIP, though, for development of that? I recognize that we don't have costs yet to point to, but just even having some sort of, you know, we know we have one mile of ten-foot trail or something like that. Having that in the CIP seems to me that would make sense for going out to, to, you know, in twenty twenty-six or something like that. And then the reason I, this is a very important project, I think, is this is a kind of investment that generates revenue, I think. It, it actually is going to give a lot of value to the property adjacent to it, and to developers, to, and so this is the kind of thing that can have a, to the, to the return on investment kind of thing. I think this is a huge opportunity. So anyhow, just wanted to, to see if we can get construction in that, in the CIP as well for the Fifth Avenue Corridor.
Yeah, and if I might, I guess, Mayor and Councilmember Gillick, just a little background on that, on where we're at. We've actually, there's been conversations just recently, which is where we got to this estimate about two hundred and five thousand for the, the design, to expand what we originally were going to, to look at. The, the initial, if you look back at the CIP, we had, we were looking at the western, a western segment, basically from the YMCA to the YAM as our first piece. We were looking at funding the design and feasibility of that with urban renewal funds from downtown. And, and actually, that segment, there, with, we had some pretty willing and interested property owners when we went through the, the study, the Fifth Avenue Corridor study. And so the idea has been to, to kind of move forward on that a little bit, first, because of that, and also because some of that corridor is already somewhat developed, so you're not starting from scratch. We have probably the biggest costs in that piece are crossings, like Twenty-seventh, not some of the portions that are actually on, like, school property or FIP property. Anyway, we had that discussion, and then as, as we were getting close to beginning the CIP process, Zach Charakitis with the E-Bird, there was a lot more conversations further east about, hey, you know, there's some more interest here, there's, but can we expand this, this study and look at the design and try and make it more of the corridor than, than that first piece? Then taking some of the E-Bird funds to contribute, putting those together and combining. So that's what you're seeing here, and that's actually just evolved in the last several months, as we were looking at trying to take advantage of a bigger swath. So we've got the consultant that's working, was initially starting on that smaller piece, working with them to say, can we look at how we could expand this and have you look further west, or further east, excuse me, and do more of the corridor? And part of that is also to try to get the railroad further along in their commitment, because they want to see more concrete design and stuff before they'll kind of take the next step and say, yeah, we're interested and we're open to this, but now we're actually, you know, on board. So that's kind of where it is, I guess. Now, that doesn't answer your question about can we try and start putting in some, you know, project pieces? I think there's a lot there to figure out, so that's probably, partly why we're coming at it this way, before we start trying to put some, some actual design numbers to some of it, and what those costs would be. But we could certainly look at that.
So I guess the answer was not sure.
We'll take a look, and yeah, certainly have a.
But at least the idea is out there. Okay, Councilmember Ripses?
Thank you, Mayor. Wyatt, I'm interested in the Stagecoach Trail, and you've got two and a half million dollars of that coming out of the Transportation Alternatives Program, and a million coming from private contributions. The, the Transportation Alternatives Program, is that something that's like a build grant, like, maybe we get it, one out of every ten times we apply, or is that something that we've got some reasonable assurance that we can get it if we get those matching funds going?
So Councilmember Ripses and Mayor and Council, actually, great question, and something that's, that's evolving right now. The Transportation Alternatives Program has been, since, so let me back up. This, there was our CTEP program back in the day, and we actually, the city of Billings, given our size, was allocated a certain amount by population annually. And we were able to actually plan projects, save money, program, and plan, because we knew we were always going to get that amount. Then, one of the new transportation, I think it was MAP twenty-one passed, and there was reinterpretation of how that program worked, and MDT very much reinterpreted and said, you know, no, it's competitive now. Everybody gets to apply, you know, the tiniest town and the largest city, all are on the same page. Since that happened, we've had very little success with the TAP program, because they're building little pieces of sidewalk and things in little small towns, and we're not, we're, we're trying to compete, but we're not getting the projects or the, the grants. That now is changing. They're going back to a more CTEP-type style program. Actually, literally, we've been working with MDT in the last few months to put that sort of back together. They're coming, and we're talking with them about what that process looks like. So we are looking at seeing a new allocation in the next, you know, come, going forward, that would come to Billings more like CTEP did, and we could really do a good job with that dedicated amount of funds. So I guess the answer is that this is much more likely now than it was literally four months ago, five months ago, because now MDT is saying, yeah, we're, we're going to look at, of doing this a different way, and Billings, you're going to see, you know, an allocation based on your population. So, so yes, I think we're, we're in a really good position to actually get something done there going forward. And we'll be coming with, to you with more information on that, and what that application process has to look like, and also what those allocations are. Because they're, they're actually, MDT's got, they're kind of backed up, they haven't done a TAP cycle for a year, and so we're like two years back now. So we're going to see an initial significant amount of funding there.
Oh, so you think that, that something on the scale of two and a half million might be possible?
Exactly, yeah, it's becoming, right, we're looking at some bigger options, bigger project options than we were before.
Well, I might encourage you to put that million-dollar private contributions on that big, long list of bonded projects. And so we're ready to go with that. I mean, as long as we're throwing stuff out there, that, you know, I think TrailNet can help with, like they did with the Skyline Trail on the engineering, to get that done. But I think something of that scale, we might need to include that in the bond. Thank you.
Wyatt, while we're talking about trails, you heard Dr. Tapia put in a pitch for the Twenty-seventh Street path, and that's, I think, pretty exciting.
27th Street path, and that's, I think, pretty exciting because the road's already there. It connects the airport with downtown, it's closer to the county museums, closer to the Yellowstone Kelly interpretive site, closer to the Heights, closer to the Metro than, say, the Stagecoach Trail. It's not as scenic as the Stagecoach Trail, but it's also only about 40% of the estimated price. Before, why, no, when they were looking at that route, there was concern, the, the road just wasn't wide enough to accommodate any sort of trail over there, even though there is a little goat path that goes up there. Has anything changed about that? Is the idea that we don't need all that width for 27th? It seems like a huge width that could spare 10 feet for a trail, but is there anything new in the, on the kind of the engineering feasibility of that trail? Because I, it seems very exciting for not unrealistic price.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so when we did the rims-to-valley study, and it looked at the feasibility of, of that corridor as well as Stagecoach and, and other, looked around the whole kind of rim face in terms of options there, there, there were several different concepts that, that were proposed in that study, and be happy to share that with the, the Council, it's on our website. But the, part of what was looked at, to your point, was not just trying to build something out over the edge outside the guardrail, which has a lot of challenges, and, and you're pretty close to a, a significant drop there, but to actually look at adjusting both the, the roadway, the, the striping, and actually that, moving that barrier potentially inward and creating a, a bigger area for a pedestrian and bike up and down type path area, and then sort of using that space. And like you said, there's, there's additional space with the lanes and everything with that entire width. So yeah, that is one of the ideas, isn't to just sort of try to do everything outside the current guardrail on the edge, but actually to pull that in, create something better there. Because one of the concerns is with that, with that roadway and, and with 27th and that slope is that if you have people coming down, you know, obviously they're going, especially if they're bicycling, they're going faster than people going up. So trying to make sure we have enough room there for that type of thing to occur, but also to get it in from the edge of the, the rims.
Okay. All right, thanks very much. Any other questions for Wyatt? Don't go away. We'll last, Debbie to come up, and I'm sure there'll be questions for the $250 million of public work spending on this list. Or maybe not, I don't know. Everybody, no, no questions. Councilmember Purington.
I'll ask one. It's my pet peeve, two-way conversions. So there was, what was it, 14 million, seven, no, 7 million on the CIP?
In this year's?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I think the total, including our funds and the downtown, was something around eight.
Okay. So whenever you go down, I don't, I don't know that street, I don't know my streets, I just know how to get there. The one that goes between the old Gannan's and Lincoln Center.
30th.
And you got this major diversion. Have there been any wrecks there that you know of? People running into each other?
Not since we've converted to two ways, no.
Okay. I just, I just find it so, well, that street was weird anyway, even when it was a one-way, it was weird. But I just, you know, I just wonder at night if people are going the wrong way, or they get into that left lane, lane turned, going north and then going south, people are looking straight at them. So anyway, but going back to our, our safe routes to school and, and the different, we're, we're hearing more needs about that. And I don't see, I mean, for me personally, I don't see the two-way conversion as a big safety issue compared to some of these other safety issues that we're looking at throughout the city on safe routes to school. So that's kind of my comment about that. I, I always feel like I'm in the minority on two-way conversions because it seems like everybody else likes them, and I don't know why, haven't figured that one out. The other point that, that I wanted to say is that I truly appreciate how you address the public in your email responses, and I think you, I don't care if they're lengthy, I think that's good because there is an explanation there. And so I want, I just want you to know that, you know, I really appreciate it, and I think everyone else that seems to, the constituents, I think they also appreciate your responses. So I'm just saying, good job, and thank you.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah. Not so fast.
Okay, goodbye. I was so late.
Who's your host writer?
Could I?
Speaking of that, maybe at some point you could comment about grand. You had an email today to a constituent about improvements in larger county stretch between Grand Avenue, but I don't think that's in the CIP. I know the goal is to find funding for, from federal dollars, but it should still be in the CIP and if it's in the cards in those, that five-year period. So I guess that'd be my question, whether that should be added to the CIP somewhere.
Well, I'm going to look at Andy to know whether, I think with the federal funding, yes, we should probably get it in there. The, the process will be through this body in the PCC to get those funds allocated. So the way that urban funds work is they are earmarked for our NPO. So we will get those funds between us and the county, we will get those funds, and it's up to this body in the PCC to allocate those funds to the different projects. When that happens, certainly it could go in here, or we could add it. Now with the idea, it probably will get in here. Rimrock Road is another one in here that could use urban funds, so we did put that in. Yep, we could add it.
Okay. So maybe the dollars are there, but you might have to reallocate or prioritize particular projects? Is that true? That, I mean, the?
We would put it in, in the priority that staff is recommending at this point with those urban funds.
Okay. Councilmember Shaw, Gillick, Neese, oh, I'm sorry, I had, it's not Councilmember Boyet way back when, so if I can, Councilmember Boyet, then we'll jump down to the center.
Thank you, Mayor. So Debbie, years ago, Billings was all two-way streets, and then we went to one-way streets to move traffic. Now we're going back. Is there a way within a year after moving all these streets around that we, we look and say, this, how did this work? Was it worth the money? There's a lot of money to move people, you know, do we really get our bang for the buck, and why do we do it and not do it? Do we really reevaluate it?
So I'll go back to the, the funding and the reason behind the two ways. So the majority of the funding is coming from, uh, street maintenance, and it's because we need to, we need to do pavement preservation on the streets downtown. Regardless of how we stripe it back, the vast majority of this money needs to be spent to chip, seal, stripe, and, and maintain our roads downtown. The piece on top of that is the additional money it's going to take to do two-way, and that's the smaller amount of this project. So not all the funding is, is going to the two-way, I guess is what I'd say. At the end of it, it's kind of a hard thing to quantify. We could look at numbers, you know, crash history, speed reduction, number of bikers and pedestrians walking, and, you know, trying to, to quantify some of those things. But one of the reasons that the downtowns go to two-way is for the adjacent properties and making it more of a, Chris really wants to talk.
No.
He's getting really close to his mic.
You got it, you're doing it.
But a lot of the reason that downtowns do that is to make your downtown more vibrant and to have more of a welcoming community. And so it's kind of hard to quantify some of that, but I'll work with the DBA and see, I'm sure they're going to be doing that since a lot of the money is coming from them. I'll work with them and see kind of how they've done that in different communities and see if there's a way to quantify some of those things.
Just to follow, it would just be nice in a year or so to come back and say, boy, that was a good idea to go two ways because this, this, and this happened, or boy, it did, we wasted our time because it didn't, but just something to, to look at.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nashaw, work this direction.
More questions on two-way streets, but also just to say, I'll take you two to coffee and give you a long pitch on why I think this is so important for the downtown. My question for you, Debbie, is what kind of percentage of this seven and a half is going to things like new signaling, new traffic lights? I guess I'm wondering, has staff had conversations about how much of that is needed? I, I drive these streets all the time. I often take, go back on North 31st because it's mostly stop signs, and it's faster than it is to go on one of the ones with lights. So in a way, it does move me through when I'm in a car faster not to have them, and I know that they're a big cost. So I'm curious, where, where is that? And what percentage-ish?
So we reestimated this project last year based on the fact that we think we can take some of the signalized intersections down to four-way stops or even two-way stops. Again, we're looking at our downtowns a little bit differently than we used to, and so some of the recommendations for downtown corridors is to get rid of some of the signalizations. So the estimate we have in there right now is my conservative, and Andy's the one that keeps cutting the budget on this, but he, he, yeah, told me to take him out. But so it's my conservative thought on how I think we will build it with absolutely no data yet.
Okay.
So we are taking out, I believe we'll take out quite a few of them.
Okay.
But yes, the big cost is in the ones we have to do. If you picture division, the cost of division going to two, you know, the two ways coming in and out of division is, is huge cost of this project.
Yeah.
So that's really where you start to see those, is those signalized that we can't get rid of necessarily.
And I know we're stuck with a lot of them because we have the state-owned streets that run through the downtown. I know, we can't fix them all, but my encouragement would be to remove as many as possible.
Councilmember Gillick, Councilmember Neese?
Thank you. Yes. First, just on the two-way conversion thing, I, I'm happy to give a presentation, actually, that has a story on, on, on the benefits, both safety-wise as well as, as economic I like, I like some of the changes that have been made since the CIP last year, and I'll just continue to push further for, we're going to have a discussion on SEPTED here in a bit, and, and so the design of our streets is really important in, in terms of, of, we heard also from, from people who have kids going to school, whether speeding cars, and so I, I'm glad to see we have a list of the Bike Boulevard, but we should, we've kind of rebranded it as a neighborhood bikeway. Those kinds of projects can be really good for traffic calming. So Lyman was, is one of the streets there that, that is along a, a neighborhood bikeway. I would like to see some more of those projects going into the future as well. I think what we're talking about is, is, it's, it's part of a public safety strategy. It's, it's, it's about SEPTED, it's about mode shift, and so we have higher capacity on our, our streets. It's the least expensive way, like adding more lanes is the most expensive way when you optimize your transportation system for, for signal-occupied vehicles. So I think it has a really good return on investment. I'd love to see some more of those projects after the, the fiscal year 2024. Now, and I was hoping I'd be able to have a suggestion of, as to where that money would come from, because I realized that it's, what I'm talking about is reprioritization, and it's got to be coming, and there's multiple sources. I, I, my thought was more stoplights, or stop signs can reduce that, but I realize that's, that's downtown TIF money, and, and so that wouldn't be useful. So I'll, I'll give some more thought to that. But anyhow, just a, a plug for, for more of the mode shift-type projects that, that do traffic calming, so more comment, I guess, than a question.
Thank you, Councilmember Neese. Thank you, Mayor. I guess since they brought up two-way streets, I, either way, no, I, it, that's fine. I, I can, I can navigate the two-way or one-way, the issues that I always have is the backend parking. So anyway, that, that said, the safer routes to school, I agree with Councilmember Purington's comments about that. I think we talked about this before, and I'm hoping the projects that you are prioritizing where we can, we're utilizing safer routes to school to prioritize those and find those projects to get those first. And so I think it would be helpful to hear in the comments that that's why we're doing this project, or this is how it's going to impact the safe route to the school, and then where we're doing some of those. So I think that would help. The other, and I agree with some of the traffic calming and stuff again, I'd like to hear because I know that, that, you know, again, we want to make the states, the streets safe for the pedestrians that are going to be there. And so I think that when we're looking at some of these projects, knowing where that safe factor's coming in when we're looking at some of these projects, I think that would help to understand what this is going to do to that, that end of the project. Not just transport things, but really how's it going to impact the, the neighborhood and the community transporting. So on the sidewalk program, is this the first year the city staff is going to, have you got the concrete staff all up and running now? Is this the first year you're going to be running out with that?
We have our crew up and running, yes, but the missing sidewalk program is too big for our crew to do. It'll always be contracted. What we'll do is those small miss, the small pieces, the trippers, replacing concrete that we take out for our service repair programs, that sort of thing to support those smaller programs. The big project where we try to install missing sidewalk in the neighborhoods will still be a bid project. It's just too big for us. It's about a million, I mean, it's usually about a million dollars. We can't do that much work in-house.
Okay. Do you, do you anticipate having difficulty like we did last year where we couldn't get contractors to do some of the work?
I do. All of you, I think all of you got a letter within the last week from me that was about a missing sidewalk being done in your neighborhoods. The way we're going to do this this year is we're going to come and, we're going to bid the projects first, and then we're going to come and do the creation of them because we, we're just guessing at this point. I mean, our bids have been all over the board. It doesn't seem to be project size, you know, there seems to be something going on, and it's really hard for us to estimate right now. So we're changing our process just a little bit to try to address that.
Okay, great, thank you. And last thing I don't see on the, the project is the, because I told Mike Yakowicz I would carry this and keep talking about this, is a 13th Street underpass. Any movement? Is that, I don't see it on the?
13th or 21st?
No, 13th.
21st is on here.
13th Street.
So Mike Yakowicz wanted 21st on here.
No, let me look at the?
So 13th is a state route, it's a state highway, and it would be something.
No, I'm sorry, you're right, 21st.
21st is the one.
You're right.
And it's on here.
I'm thinking the wrong way, sorry. All right, 21st Street. And so can you, can you give us a little update as far as what that's, I mean, is that going to be, how's that going to look? Do you know what the preliminary designs are?
So we did a preliminary look at what we could do, and of course, it's pretty, it's pretty early on, but you would have a grade separated lane on both sides of that because you need to, to get deep enough to get the clearance of, you know, anywhere from 10 and a half to 13 and a half feet is what we'd be looking at. So you'd have grades separated on Montana, so basically you'd have your two lanes going through and then one lane going down, making that turn, and then the same thing on the other side.
Great, all right, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Boyet, Ripses, Councilmember Purington, do you have your, okay, Councilmember Boyet?
Just, I'm the advocate for speed bumps in Billings. So we go out to a park on, off of Colton next to, I think it's, is it Poly Vista there? There are speed bumps in the middle of the street, and they're public streets. Why can't we do speed bumps in residential areas where the people think that there's too much speeding in there? Can they pay for a speed bump?
So we have a traffic calming policy from 1985 in the city of Billings, and we're updating it right now. And that policy is, it is funded by adjacent property owners. There's a, a trigger of how many people have to vote for it and that sort of thing. We're updating that policy. There are so many more traffic calming methods that we can use now, a lot of them cost almost nothing. We're doing two neighborhoods right now where we're going to paint roundabouts on intersections and use like delineators to do pop-up, it's called pop-up traffic calming. They are finding those are a lot more effective than even speed humps. Speed humps are allowed. What happens in a neighborhood is when somebody's coming down there and they stop to get over it, then they accelerate after it. They're not all they're cracked up to be. A lot of times they don't even address the speeding concerns that are in there. So I'm kind of a proponent of speed humps in the right place at the right time, but there are other things we can do as well. So we're going to finish that policy this year, and then it'll be neighborhood-funded, but we also have a funding, we also put a CIP item in here. If the city's going to pay for it, though, we have to prioritize, and it's going to have to be spread throughout the city, and there's a whole nother can of worms that we've got to figure out with that. A lot of cities have done that, a lot of cities do a 50% match on it to try to still get some neighborhood participation. We're working out the details on that, we've got a little bit of time before this becomes a project, but we'll get there.
I was just thinking around the schools itself, because that would really slow people down. You don't have to put them everywhere in Billings, but schools would be an ideal place within a, you know, a certain range. Thank you.
Councilmember Ripses?
Thank you, Mayor. Debbie, I want to stay on this idea of traffic calming.
Um, we've got $29 million worth of projects to widen roads so people can drive faster, and we've got $50,000 out of Kelly for, uh, traffic calming four years from now. Given everything we've heard over the last year, that's wildly imbalanced. Um, I think we should be doing half as much, you know, speeding up and, and spend that other $14 million on traffic calming. And if it's not that much, then great, we don't have to spend it. But I, I, I think, um, so, so two questions. Why so little so far out, four years from now? And then on the other side of things, when we do, if, if and when we do these $29 million worth of road expansion projects, how are we gonna build them differently so that we don't turn around 10 years from now and say, oh, we need traffic calming on Rimrock and Modad and Broadwater? What are we gonna do differently than we've been doing for the last 10 or 20 years, building these new roads?
Like every industry, our industry is not standard, and it's not stagnant. And so there have been a lot of changes. 20 years ago, you moved traffic. That was your job, everywhere you went, that was your job. If you had a level of service C, you built more lanes, you made it faster. That's not the way the traffic industry works very much anymore. That being said, the harder you make arterials to drive, the more people go to neighborhood streets and collectors, and that's not what we want. So what we need to do is create a backbone in our na, in our community to move traffic. The projects we have on here, like the Rimrocks, the Broadwaters, the Grands, are not just to move traffic, they're to make it wider so there's pedestrian access, there's bike lanes in a lot of those, um, but it still creates the safety by putting those center turn lanes in, and some of those other things where we can create safety but also move traffic. Something like Rimrock Road will still be two lanes of traffic. I mean, we're not gonna move that to a five lane, it'll be a three lane. You have the center turn lane, though, to reduce those rear-end accidents, and those, those accidents we see that way, you'll add your trails, you'll add possibly bike lanes, I'm not sure what it'll end up being, but that's how we build it now, is more to see the multimodal use of the entire corridor. So, so it's not just about moving cars, um, faster, it's about creating some corridors that also have safety in them. Rimrock's not safe, Grand is not safe, Broadwater, I would say, is not horribly safe as a two-lane narrow road. So I think the capacity issue is a big deal, but it's capacity for everybody, not just cars. Did that answer? It doesn't answer, because you look like I didn't answer.
No, I, I mean, honestly, that's what we've been building. Um, if we look at Broadwater, we, we're just gonna build more of that. Um, you've told us before that congestion, the congestion is at the intersections, not in the spots in between, right? So it's, it's not a capacity issue, we've already got trails there and all those kinds of things. But it, it's really just the more of the idea that, um, you know, any new road we seem to be building or widening, um, becomes a, a drag strip, right? The, the last road we just built, we just built the road, Rocky Vista Way, and it's like 80 feet wide with a center, a center turn lane, um, for a, for a commercial kind of resident, uh, district. Um, and, and you already see people as they come around, uh, you know, because it now connects to, to the apartments, as soon as they hit that stretch, they gun it, um, for the last quarter mile to, to the, um, to the road. So we're continuing to do that, um, and, and I'm just, it's, we need to find a way so that when we build these roads and widen these roads, we aren't just building more of the same, because all we hear about are complaints about speeding and noise and all over the West End. And it might not be a problem in other parts of the city, but over the West End, it, it really is.
I wouldn't say that's all the complaints we hear. We hear people concerned that they can't get from point A to point B very easily during rush hour and other times. So I think we're balancing the capacity and the multimodal. What you're referring to is a subdivision, and that needs to get changed in the subdivision regs. It's different than what we build. So when the city has the option of building things, we don't have to meet those subdivision regs, it's a little bit different, but that needs to be addressed in the regs when we look at bringing new subdivision regs forward. That the Rocky Vista Ways was a subdivision.
Yeah, so, so how can we get more traffic calming moved up, you know, not four years from now?
We can do that. It's such a, I mean, it's a small amount, it's $50,000, you can double it and put it next year. I mean, it's just gonna, we're gonna have to just move some things around a little bit, but if we wanna move that up closer, I have no problem doing that.
Thanks.
At all. Yep.
Probably a good idea. Councilor Pierington?
I have the perfect traffic calming solution. The reason why they're going so fast is because it's a nice smooth road. So you put more bumps in the road, you just put potholes in the road, it slows everyone down.
And think of all the money we can save.
Think of all the money you can save, and you can use that asphalt someplace else to build another road. So, yeah, go back to gravel roads, there you go, with washboards. Um, so question, this, and this, and it goes back to that traffic calming, and so you're just gonna have to explain to me, and I think this was, um, I heard Chris mention it at something, maybe it was, uh, last council meeting, with, like Elmo, they're saying, we want on-street parking, we want on-street parking. It's traffic calming. To me, it is such a hazard to have on-street parking, because you have, if you already have kids running out into the street, then you're gonna have kids running out in the street between cars that cannot be seen. And, um, I mentioned it today to someone, and they said, well, yeah, and you leave your, your vehicle totally exposed to whatever we have in our, on our streets for broken windshields and all of that. So I, whenever you look at that as a traffic calming, yeah, it does slow you down, because there's cars there and you can barely pass two cars there. But explain to me the other side of that coin, how it isn't safe? I mean, I don't think it's safe, I don't, I would not park my car on the street if I could avoid that, so, so explain that to me.
Okay. So if you look at streets that are very similar in nature, and I'll use Lewis, and I'll use Lake Elmo, their width is almost exactly the same. If you drive down Lewis, there's people parked on both sides of the street 24/7, um, and there're stripes, you know, for the parking, we have the striped bike lanes, and so we've narrowed that up, we've made it feel constrained. The speeds on Lewis are, are, are lower. Exact same width of the street, but they're lower. Um, some of the best neighborhood streets that we have are like the tree streets, very narrow. You drive, you park on both sides, you really can't quite squeeze two cars through a little bit, um, there's no speeding in those neighborhoods. Um, it's a very effective way to calm traffic. I understand what you're saying, I mean, I'm watching the ball goes out in the road and kids run after it, but there's a point that we can't engineer out some of that. We have to teach our kids to cross at the right spots, we have to teach them those things. You know, what I'm talking about is slowing traffic, and, you know, the other piece of that on Lake Elmo is maybe crossings that we've talked about, making sure people know where to cross, and, you know, um, getting more people to cross at the same location, so there's driver expectation, there's pedestrian expectation, there's a lot of things that need to go together in those corridors. It can't be one solution, it needs to be, you know, looked at as a whole.
And, and I would, and I agree with you on that, that we're not gonna solve everything, and there is a certain amount of personal responsibility, well, there's a lot of personal responsibility in, you know, teaching your kids, doing, doing it yourself. I see a lot of difference, though, in Lake Elmo Road than Lewis Avenue, because of the school connections and some of those other, you know, the businesses. So I, I do, I don't see those as, as really, uh, a good comparison, and, but I understand what you're saying, I do understand what you're saying, but I'm just, I, I get real concerned whenever that's, that's the goal, especially on, because I think Lake Elmo is considered an arterial, I don't know that Lewis is.
They're both collectors.
Oh, collectors. Oh, Lake Elmo is a collector?
Yeah.
Interesting, okay. Well, anyway...
And the struggle we have when we come into a neighborhood and we say we're gonna take the parking off, nobody wants the parking off, but if you put the real estate out there, it has to get used, or all it does is drive up speeds. So, you know, we've looked at that at Orchard and Calhoun are great examples. Um, when we were gonna take that parking off, the neighborhood's like, you gotta give us our parking, we have to have parking on street, but when people don't park there, the speeds go up.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, Council, we still have a third item and technically public comment. What's that?
He's asleep.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, not a lot of that. Um, so let's, let's wrap up, just a, a quick observation, uh, uh, fast-moving traffic is not really necessarily unsafe traffic. I'm, I'm thinking of, um, uh, Germany, uh, literally no speed limit on the Autobahn. Uh, there is another part of safety which is enforcement. Uh, there they have incredible certainty of, uh, enforcing their rules and significant, uh, severity also, and, uh, it works really well, really well. If you're on a cellphone or something, um, it's not a good picture, and so that's another, which is why I'm a fan of, uh, uh, traffic cameras and, and things like that that are cost-effective and add to safety. But, Councilor McGillicuddy, your last word, and then we'll, uh, go to public comment and, uh, move to item three, our SEP TED discussion.
Something non, non-transportation-oriented, but still public works-related, um, just in the, uh...
More than traffic?
That's right.
What?
Uh, just a encouragement on the solid waste, uh, area, um, um, with the fat oils and grease coming in as a feedstock into the city, um, that, that, the city's gonna be paid to receive this. Um, I, I really think it would be, uh, behooves to, to look more carefully at, if that can be made into biodiesel. Um, we have, you know, Earth First Aid, their, their whole fleet of, of, uh, recycling, um, vehicles is, is fed with the biodiesel that they just pick up, um, but I think it's a huge opportunity that, um, we should investigate.
I'll send you the report we did on it.
Okay.
We did one about two years ago and looked at the cost benefit of that, and I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I will send it to everybody.
All right, uh, thank you.
Biodiesel.
Well...
I will get you a paper copy.
I doubt there is any public comment, but we need to, uh, make sure there's an opportunity for public comment on this item. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Council, any further discussion on this, uh, CIP before we move to item three? Councilor Pierington?
Just a real quick question to Andy, and it, you've kind of answered it, but I don't know if there's a real general answer to this. What sort of inflationary numbers did you place on whether it was department by department? And was there things taken out just for the per�encep of fact that we're gone, there's no way we can afford that? I don't think that was taken out, because I didn't see anything that we couldn't afford, but...
There's extra backend parking in there for you.
Okay, thank you.
Because we, we had some...
Thank you.
We found some money. Um, so specifically, I'm back up there a little bit, uh, I don't have an answer for you. The, the project estimates are provided by the departments, um, but, you know, we can talk, I can kind of touch bases and then see.
Well, I just wondered if there was, you know, everyone was kind of in, maybe your, your staff meetings or something, it's like, okay, we're looking at an inflationary rate of 7%, 8%, whatever it is. I think some in Montana, it's 9%. So did we look at an, an overall general inflationary rate?
Short answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
There's just not enough uniformity in the overall CIP. The projects are so dispersed. When we get to the ERP for equipment, you're gonna see where you're talking vehicles across the board, that's more akin to, I think, some of those generalities.
But, but just to clarify, Andy, we, we don't want the public to be misled here, you're not saying that the departments did not include inflationary adjustments before they gave you the numbers, are you?
I am not saying that. I, I'm saying there was not a general, use this percentage for your growth.
And in all likelihood, the departments were taking into account some sort of inflationary adjustments.
Yeah, and I think a lot of it would be based off most recent bids, so we've seen, you know, what it packs.
Whatever, whatever those numbers were. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, Council, let's move on to item number three. Chris, this is, uh, yours, I think, to tee up. Thank you, uh, Mike, Debbie, everybody.
So I wanted to be careful not to, not to overstate what we've got here, which you saw with a pretty general memo that I put with it, is, this overall discussion as we've been, um, looking at how to implement both SEP TED principles across not just direct safety but indirect as well, uh, inclusive of even, um, scope of work and other things as we're putting things out to bid for professional services. So that's part of the dialogue, the training that's coming up in May for both elected officials and staff. And part of tonight, Wyatt and I and the team wanna, wanna listen to what you're thinking relative to how deep you wanna go, as far as regulatory, um, issues. So those are all kind of topics, the, the, the fourth one, I would say, is just a sensitivity to while we're all as anxious as anybody to get some of these principles implemented, they're not necessarily in our codes and our regulations, so when developers or plans are coming through the system and the process, um, you know, minimizing, surprising them when they get to this stage as to, you know, how far do we wanna go adjusting, uh, our rules? So, sorry, that's pretty, pretty generic, but wanted to hear from you guys as to, you know, what you're thinking, as well as the training that's coming up in May, encouraging you guys to participate in that. And some of the work Wyatt's team has looked at Recode, and we're gonna provide a, a written kind of feedback as to what in Recode implemented some of the key, some of the general principles of SEP TED, um, so that you can see that specifically. So we didn't have a presentation to give, really wanted to hear from you guys and, and have a dialogue about what you think we should be doing as we are building up for the training that's coming in the spring.
Okay, Chris, I'll just gonna start with the obvious question. You, you wanna know how deep we wanna go, what are our options? This is 40 hours, that seems like, uh, a, a one week, uh, we haven't given one week of training to anything, even approaching it, and I can't say that this would be the most important thing we've ever done in our careers, council people. So are, is that the only option? And I, and Mr. Brooks is back there who may wanna comment as well.
Wyatt, if you wanna...
Well, yeah.
Or Wyatt?
And, yeah, absolutely. Dan has things to contribute. I guess the, there's sort of two things, the, so the training is to learn about SEP TED and, and get sort of the, the basic certification appro, you know, like here's what it is, and here's how you do it, and, and Dan can certainly chime in here on, on that. We've had one other training in the past here in Billings with some of our staff. I guess, so, so that's the idea of that, and Chris can connect, correct me, is to give everyone here a sense of what it all involves, how deep, you know, all the different elements of it, and then, um, where are we going with it? Because I guess the big thing that I've been saying to Chris a lot here is, if we want it to be a regulatory thing where we actually regulate this, that's great, there's a whole process to get that in, set in place, and that is not in, we have not, we're not going there right now because we haven't been told to go there, and it's actually a pretty heavy lift. We're taught, you're, you know, is the building, are, you know, are we reviewing building permits for SEP TED? Is this a requirement? I mean, there's a whole bunch of things there, so that's what we have to unpack, and I think the, the training is part of that to, for everyone to understand what SEP TED is. I've heard even from, from this body talking about safety things that aren't SEP TED, but are still safety concerns. So it's like, okay, we're, you know, we're talking about street design and other things, great, but we have to then figure out what is, what are we doing there, and then where are we addressing that in our regulations? And one of the concerns we've been having is, they're not in the regulations now, and so when developers and people putting projects together are using what's currently adopted and what's currently in place, and so we need to know, okay, when we're gonna get to a direction on making changes, and then we have to make those changes before we expect the development community and others to just walk in with everything changed or, or expecting that. And we kind of ran into that a little bit with Buffalo Crossing. There was nothing, there's nothing in the regs that, that, you know, required some of the things that got brought up, and so we wanna be able to understand where we're going before we get into those situations and before we put them there. So, so that's kind of the idea, and I thought that was part of the idea with the training, is to get everyone introduced and to understand, here's SEP TED, and here's what you can do with it, because there's a lot of things you can do. But it, but it starts to become a question of regulation and requirements, and that's where we are, because right now, and Dan can speak to this, there's voluntary SEP TED evaluations going on all over the city, uh, with multiple SEP TED certified folks, Dan being one of them, and those are going great, but they're voluntary and, and businesses are, you know, contacted or reach out for that. So that's different than, than I feel like we're maybe...
So Wyatt, do you know if 40 hours is the only option?
Well, that's the training, I guess, I'll, I'll defer to Dan and stuff on that, that's an, that's an initial training process, so, yeah.
Uh, Councilor Rowan, your...
I just wanna be clear, as the person who led this amendment, it was certainly never the purpose that council would attend that training. That, that training belongs to a partnership between city staff and developers or, you That training belongs to a partnership between city staff and developers or, you know, community leaders or whomever in the community who would be in interest. But certainly as a, as a sponsor of the amendment, it was never my intention that council members would sit through that training because we don't do it. I mean, we, it's, we're not going to go out and do evaluations on properties.
Okay. I just was hearing something different from Chris there.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Well, and, and I still would share, if, if some of you, some, some people have full-time jobs, some don't, some can dedicate more time. I can see no harm if you have the time and availability to better understand it relative to integrating it into our policies and rules. So if any of you can participate, I think it's, it's a positive thing. There are other options than just the 40-hour course, though, that Dan can cover since he's trained and.
Dan Brooks.
Thanks. I suppose having just woken up, I'll say good morning, Mayor and members of council. Thank you very much for having this discussion. I think crime prevention through environmental design, SEPTED, is an incredibly useful, beneficial tool. We've found a lot of success, as was mentioned, with our voluntary assessments of our business properties. But as I saw that this discussion was coming up tonight, thought, well, gosh, that'd be a good opportunity to talk about some other ways that city council can more effectively implement SEPTED into city operations. Not necessarily on the regulatory side. In fact, I don't even know if we'd be that keen on looking at additional regulations for building, et cetera, at this moment. But as the city's largest property owner, why, why wouldn't the city want to look at more ways to utilize the principles of SEPTED in operations? And so, well, you're right. Frankly, we're hosting the, the training and thanks to the city for the partnership and DBA as well. But, but gosh, I'll come and, I'll come and give you a half-day's presentation and some practical application training. I'd much rather have city staff in the, in the 40-hour training than, than to see you all there. But happy to have you if you want to come. So I, I guess my first recommendation would be that city staff, and as many city staff as we can get, attend the training as possible. I've brought the, the basic SEPTED course book here in case you want to have a look at it. I only have the one copy, so I would ask that at some point I, I do get it back. But to like, one of the concepts that you talked about tonight with traffic calming and SEPTED, I mean, it's so important. It's a whole chapter in here, right? The more that you can calm traffic, the more that you can make people more aware of their surroundings, the, the more natural surveillance that they'll provide and you can have a much safer community. So.
And we've got one.
Oh, you do?
Yep, I've got one already on my desk. Yep.
All right.
I think from you.
I guess I must have sent it. Good.
If I don't, I'll take that one.
I'm more efficient than I thought I was. So a couple other ideas that, that I had had, thinking about this over the weekend, potentially looking at preferencing RFPs for city capital projects that are going to a firm that's got architects trained in SEPTED, that have that professional designation and that, and that certification to make sure that, you know, you don't have to do a, a review of the, the project on the back end. You just know that they're building in SEPTED principles from the start. I think that would be valuable. You could, I'm checking my notes here. Commission SEPTED surveys, like we do for our properties, of all city-owned properly. A, a tall order, I understand, but maybe there's a place that you could start. And, and my thought was city parks. In the 2021 Polco survey, people were more afraid of being in city parks than they were at, at nighttime than they were downtown at nighttime. So maybe there's an opportunity to commission SEPTED surveys of some city property. I, I don't think you could go with us. That's probably a, a, a bigger, larger amount of work than, than we'd have time for. But I did chat with the, the founder of the National Institute of Crime Prevention and the gentleman who's going to come and do the, the training in May of next year. And he offered that they have, of course, the SEPTED database of everybody in the nation that's gone through the training and, you know, could hire out somebody that way. But if we got enough staff trained at, at city parks, they could certainly do that internally as well. The last thought I have here, just kind of another idea thrown at the wall. Any, any future master plans or revisions should probably require a section, a section in there on SEPTED. How are you going to implement the five principles, four principles? Sorry, we, we go with five. We just break out lighting because it's pretty doggone important. But the four principles of SEPTED into your master plan, how is it going to affect moving forward in the next 10 years if that's how long a master plan lasts? So just, just kind of a couple ideas. Just want to reiterate again, you know, much less keen on the regulatory aspect, much more supportive of the city looking to build SEPTED into city processes and make sure that, like we're trying to get with our businesses, being good, good leaders of safety in the community by making these SEPTED improvements to their properties, that the city's doing so as well. So just a couple thoughts for counsel to chew on.
Okay, thank you very much. I bet there's some questions for Dan. Dan, before you run away, are there questions for Dan? Counselman Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, have you been able to quantify, well, sorry, I don't know how many properties have gone through and done their SEPTED changes and improved their property to make it more safe. But have you, is there any quantification of really what is in the, as far as the reduction of police calls, things like that, that we can utilize to quantify to help say, hey, yeah, this is something that we do want to really insist on, that people look at this SEPTED because it's going to save, the taxpayers want it because we're not going to have so many calls, police calls and things like that.
Yep. Thanks for the question, Mayor. Counselman Neese, we have not had the time to do a statistical analysis like that. There's a, a couple of issues. One being that we just do it on a voluntary basis. So a lot of our surveys are done in random spots all throughout Billings with our member businesses. I would point, though, and I'm happy to send out to council, a 2,000 study that was done in which the author of the study studied 26 previous studies on SEPTED and found that every, every program that had multi-variable SEPTED uses, so not just lighting, but lighting and fencing and signage and, and other elements, so that had those multi-component parts of the program, reduced robberies in those neighborhoods by somewhere between 80% and 30%.
Wow.
So I'm happy to send that to council to, to have a look at that study.
Mayor, another quick question. On your training, after, after 40 hours of training, are you SEPTED certified? Or is that something more training that you would go to?
Another good question, Mayor. Counselman Neese, no. After the 40 hours, you are designated a SEPTED practitioner. You then have to take the advanced course to become a SEPTED professional.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Dan, on the issue of regulate, regulations that incorporate these SEPTED principles, I think we're all probably a little nervous about going down that path too far. But we have building codes, other things that are intended to keep people safe. And, you know, requiring lighting on sidewalks in a dangerous area is the same thing, it seems to me. So I don't know that we should immediately reject that concept. Are there other cities that have incorporated this? I'm not big on inventing the wheel, but big on stealing other people's wheels. So are there some other wheels out there that we could take a look at?
Mayor, good question. Another part of the training, one of the chapters in there is zoning ordinances and SEPTED. So Florida has a number of ordinances and what they do is they do overlay districts as well that require some use of SEPTED principles and practices for businesses or neighborhoods in those areas. So I, I don't have many details on that, but there are examples out there throughout the country. And Florida's been one of the leading states to implement those practices.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else for Dan? Don't see anything else.
Thank you.
So Chris, I guess to summarize, I'm not hearing anybody say that they don't think it's good for staff to participate on some level. That would be up to you. If council wants to spend a week doing it, they could do it. But I, I think that's a bit much. But some sort of light version, I, I think, I suspect there'd be some interest in. And if Wyeth wants to pursue what's going on in Florida as an education effort, that's great. But I, I doubt that we want to jump both feet into the regulatory side, at least at this point. That would be my observations. Counselmember Purington?
And that's where I was going, is that I think it's, it's, it's fine if there are certain department heads that this is in their purview of whatever it is that they do, you know, public works, parks.
Facilities.
Planning facilities, yeah. So I think some sort of cursory look at, to see how it would actually be implemented. But I think most importantly for council, and whether you agree or not, I think it's important, where Roy was heading with this, is that I think we need to see, if we're going to affect policy, that we need to know what the numbers are. And because you have a certain amount of businesses that have adopted SEPTED, we need to know if it worked or what it worked or what it's, you know, accomplished for them in, in safety. For the city, how would it provide additional safety measures with, whether it is the traffic calming, the lighting, the fencing? We're already doing some of those things. So I definitely would not, at this point, pursue any sort of regulatory measures. But I, I think it would be interesting even for the city just to spend the money for training for our department heads, because, you know, it's not cheap, to find out what would it, what would it look like for the city and where would it, you know, other cities that have done it. But I don't see it as a, as a negative, you know, to look at it. But I definitely would not be interested in, in adopting any sort of policies at this point.
Counselman Neese, then Counselor Vetricki.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm, I'm cautious about adopting regulations as well. However, I, I also am concerned over development within the city that may be developed in, to areas that would create unsafe areas. We saw that in, in the Buffalo Trail. We, you know, we tried to fix it, but in the end we said, you know, this is something we need to address by policy. Because that is going to be, those corridors like that are going to develop into unsafe areas where people do not want to travel. And I think there's, I think we need to address that. And the only way through that is through some of the building codes. And how to do that yet, I, I'm not certain of. I think we need to have some builders involved in this, and I hope they can get to some of this training. And maybe the Home Builders Association should be aware of this so that they're involved in this training. Because I think it is something that we, at least I, I believe I want to move forward on to make sure that we're creating good, safe neighborhoods in that respect. We're not creating, at least we're not creating, we're not creating dangerous areas in the neighborhood. And so, again, I'm cautious about going down the regulation, regulatory way, but I, I do think that we need to have the ability for the staff to, at least when we're looking at a project, to indicate to us, yeah, these are, these, these really don't meet the SEPTED principles because of this, this or that. And whether or not we as a council then make some changes to those preliminary plots, that would be up to us at that time. And maybe they, the staff at that point, having been through SEPTED enough, could give, give us some good upfront recommendations that would be a better way to address it than just on the fly, like we thankfully didn't do on the last one. I wish we had something to done because I, again, I think those areas are, are not going to be safe.
Thank you. Counselmember Vetricki, Owen and Joy?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's important, I think, for us to understand that the underlying basic assumption of SEPTED is eyes on the street, looking out for what's going on in your neighborhoods, seeing people, being able to see what's going on. You know, so basically, all of these design things are aimed at opening up line, sightlines so that you can see what's going on someplace, making sure that people are using the same kind of areas and stuff like that. We did implement a lot of these things in Recode. There's a ton of that type of stuff that's in there. The conversations we're having here right now about traffic calming, that is something else that's, that's going on there. I mean, you can't have an eye on the street if you're going past it at 40 miles an hour. But if you go on by at 25 or 15, or if you're actually convinced to stop and walk, you know, then you're starting to be part of that group of neighborhood people who are paying attention to what's going on in the neighborhood and doing something about it. But it's also about density. To a very large degree, you can have clean sightlines and bright lights all over the place, but if you don't have a neighbor for two miles, it's not going to make any difference whatsoever, you know? And, and frankly, in a lot of our N3 neighborhoods, those houses are so far apart, I personally do worry about what's going to happen when some of the trees in those areas start to mature. Because there will be a lot of areas where, which are dark and, and scary and stuff like that. You know, so I think we need to keep in mind the goal and keep it, you know, forefront as we're making these decisions. But at the same time, I don't, SEPTED is a set of tools for very specific sets of situations. And I do believe that the principles are applicable, but I don't think that the specific tools are something that we necessarily need to implement across the city. And frankly, in most of the places where we probably do need to do it, we wouldn't be able to get it to do it. We can't get, force people to redesign, you know, stuff that already exists, you know, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselmember Owen and Joy?
Thank you, Mayor. So council has an established set of priorities, and the number one is public safety, right? So everything that every department is doing should be viewed through the lens of, is this project in any way contributing to the reduction in crime and, in public safety? Is it making the situation worse or is it a neutral? Does it not matter? So I don't think the suggestion that we look sort of holistically at how the city plans and how the city operates as a crime prevention strategy is unreasonable because council's been very clear that that's our number one priority. So if you ask sort of what I think we should do for SEPTED, I think that should be the first step. There is an established priority. And so is this project that the city is leading contributing to worsening or neutral as to public safety? So the Stillwater Building, park design, road and trail design, look at the subdivision regs. You know, I mean, I know, I think coming up soon, we have the Cottonwood Master Plan RFP. So did we encourage that? Did we, in, in the RFP, did we encourage people to say, again, it may, you may not have to be a SEPTED professional, although there's probably value to that. But I remember when we did the Castle Rock Plan, we really had to push hard to have a conversation about interior trails. The habit is to do a trail around the perimeter. But if we want to activate that dark space, having some internal and even internally lit trails is a part of creating those active public spaces that put eyes on the street, as Counselmember Vetricki's saying. So I think when the city is leading a project, we should be looking at it through a public safety strategy lens. The amendment that was adopted by council also included the adoption of what I believe is open source, open source software called Risk Terrain Mapping, that it partners with SEPTED to help us identify, right now, our crime data will tell us where crime is happening, but it doesn't necessarily tell us why. And Risk Terrain Mapping helps us understand why so that if we can work with those targeted business owners, or if it's a city property, then we can have some why as to what's going on. So I think that's an area where we haven't done with the amendment asked yet. A lot of the SEPTED, as I understand it, and Dan can correct me, is about some community engagement, right? The city cannot and should not do everything, but strong neighborhoods and strong communities are themselves a crime prevention strategy. So are we, do we continue to work with and engage neighborhood watches? They've migrated online, which is great. Are we working with task force to look at targeted areas? So police officers go to every task force meeting and they give really great crime reports. And they will show us where in the neighborhood the crimes are happening. So are we going the next step to encourage that task force? Let's find this area where, at this intersection, we keep having crimes every month, can the task force work on some community strategies? That happened at Castle Rock Park. You remember, they started doing junk cleanup over there on the school district two side of things to reduce some of the, you know, loitering and drug use and those things, disturbances in the neighborhood. Are we working with schools on hotspots? Are there particular areas where we can provide the data because we have that crime data and encourage the conversation, the PTA or someone? I mean, can we start engaging our community in thinking about local problem solving? One of the things that I think we're not looking at is operational approaches. So there's all this kind of built environment stuff that is major investment, but could we program the parks more actively? You know, we, we shut them down at dusk and right now dusk is at about 4 o'clock. But could we use those more to build community, to encourage more people to come out, to put more eyes on the street, to create less vacant spaces? The libraries worked really hard at this, at making the libraries active as it possibly can so that it doesn't continue to sort of be a magnet for crime and loitering. I, I think one of the hardest things we'll have to struggle with is lighting. I just think that's hard. Montanans and I, I mean, we all like dark skies and seeing the stars and all that. And no one wants to shoot a bunch of pollution up in there. So some of these conversations, like fencing, like lighting, how it might integrate with subdivision regulations, those are going to take long conversations. Those are not quick. They're not hammers, I think, that we just throw down on people. But we have to think about, how do we balance our desire for privacy versus eyes on the street? How do we desire, how do we keep our quiet, peaceful neighborhoods and yet have adequate safe lighting? So some of these things, I think, we're going to have to work on for a long time. And then the last thing I think we could think about is using the capital improvement plan to prioritize those investments that are safer to schools, SEPTED, community transportation safety. Let's, let's, you know, think about using our built environment as a buffer against crime and as maybe even a tool to reduce crime. So those would be my thoughts as to what we could be doing as, as top priorities because that's what you asked.
All good thoughts. Counselmember Joy and then counsel, it's 20 to 10. I recommend that we try to wrap up. So Counselmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I, I remember we actually missed some opportunities to implement some ideas of SEPTED in when we were. implement some ideas of SEPTED in, when we were adopting our new zoning code. I don't want to go back to hours and hours of discussion that the council went through, but there were, there were design elements that were incorporated, which were to garage door fronts on the front of the house. We talked about that for hours. That was, a lot of, a lot of those ideas were modified or rejected. The doors set back from the front of the garage so that a person who's inside looks out the door of their, a window of their door, they're not seeing anything but a very small slice between the side of the garage and their landscaping. So you've got eyes on the street for about, you know, three or four feet. There were lots of things, that's just one of the things that I'm thinking about. There were a lot of different things that were in there that were meant to make our neighborhoods stronger and safer. So I don't think at all that we should consider those things that were talked about during adoption of the new zoning code as dead. I think that was maybe a moment when we had a conversation, but maybe we weren't all of the same mind, or we didn't understand the value of having those design elements in place in our zoning code. Talking about creating corridors or gated communities. Gated communities are great if you're on the inside. They're not so great if you're the house that sits on the outside. There, that's, those are some really difficult conversations, I think, that council should have. And I would also say, density. And people say, well, density, this. But, you know, it just came, my mother was talking about her heating bill for the winter, and, you know, she lives in a condo, and it's, each side of her has another townhouse. So together, they both create the heat that's in my mother's apartment or in her condo. There's a whole bunch of things about us being a little bit closer together that are not only safety-minded, because no matter what happens, if you live in a townhouse, somebody will hear it. And the second thing is efficiency. There's tremendous amount of efficiency to that. So I think maybe adopting our new zoning code was just the beginning of a conversation and that this will continue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on item number four? Any public comment? Seems unlikely. We'll close the public comment period. Council, anything else before we ask Chris whether there's any items for number four to give us a recap on for upcoming events? Nope? Chris, number four?
Yep. So air on my part. So you're going to see in your packet that you've got the, actually, it's not continuum of care, the agreement is with United Way. So between yesterday and today, literally, that changed. And there also is a change in cost. And I forgot to check the box that these need to go on the regular agenda, so it's on consent. So I'm sure you're going to pull it off consent, because COC is asking that you consider the fact that they're going to incur a $21,000 fee from United Way to be their fiduciary and handle things, that that 210 contract be considered at 231. So that's in your packet for Monday. The other two critical things you're going to see on the regular agenda, four properties, City Hall, where we're sitting today, Park One Retail on the first floor, and two parking lots that are, two pieces of property that you would think of as one parking lot, but there are two separate pieces of property, as the first four properties that, following our process, step one is the council agreeing to put them out onto the market for sale. So those are on your agenda next week. And then the last item, my annual review and the employment contract went through the Operations Committee for a recommendation that's on your actions. So you got three action items and really a fourth action item if you move that United Way item off of consent and on to action. Thank you.
Chris, just if I can ask you a kind of obvious question. How do we decide whether we want to sell this property if we don't know where we're going to go, specifically the Stillwater Building? Don't we have to kind of look at all that as a package?
Well, all of this takes time. I mean, going through the process, notifying all the neighbors, putting these things on the market, is a time-consuming process. So I think by saying we'll sell, or lease, or whatever, that's just step one. It's not actually agreeing to any deal. But obviously, part of relocating to Stillwater and with the interest issues and financial issues, there is a connection of, in the early days, that project did not rely on the sale of this in order to make that project happen. That project can't be fulfilled without selling some of our assets and getting them in private hands. So, yeah, they go together, but these are always messy as well, because our process is to put it out to the public and see what we get for proposals.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other, is there any public comment on item number four? No public comment. Any questions for Chris, though, before we wrap up, have any council discussion? Don't see any? Is there any council discussion before we go to, Councilmember Tricky?
I was hoping we'd actually be done early enough to have a conversation tonight about the public educate, the notion of doing some public education and how we'd go about doing it. But in, you know, deference to getting Councilmember Boyett to the polling place, you know, alive and well and awake, you know, I won't do that. But I do want you to be thinking about it, and I do encourage you all to reach out to me and give me your thoughts on it. I think it is a very, very important and missing part of our approach to prevention for public safety.
Thank you. And I think Councilman Tricky sent us an email that you could respond to today. So, okay, if that's all, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.